Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I think we're pretty close to being ready at six, a little bit after six o'clock. Do I have to hit the gavel or what? Okay, it's, uh, welcome everybody here to the city council. It's May fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Time is, uh, about one minute after six. I will go ahead and open this meeting with prayer. Proven everyone as we come before this time that, uh, as we open this face in city council meeting, we are so very thankful for by influence in our lives. We're thankful for the city, the, uh, and the people that live in this city and also the, the council and the staff. We're thankful for the treatment we have to, uh, to the things that we see fit within the law. Help us Father and Heaven, so we can see His name, Jesus Christ again.
Repeat class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, we'll go on to B, the consent agenda, approval of the May first, two thousand nineteen city council meetings, and redevelopment agency. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Okay, so then the motions are made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go on to C, petitions, uh, public forum. Would like to open a public forum. Anyone can speak on items that are not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less if you can, so we'll go to that point. Okay, not seeing anyone wanting to take advantage of that. We'll move on to number two, staff reports.
That was a lot of work that she has put in. I went down there for a while.
Uh, I did too, and the kids had, the kids had a lot of fun swimming. Clean water, yeah. They had fun.
And when, when, when the tide, there was, I remember a very wild one there. We had a hydrant open the whole time, it flushed it through. Just to be safe, we took that, took the costume, that's why we did that. We took the sample, we flushed it to the end, and then it got well, and then it came back. And there was a little confusion on the area, and it was just that one little section with black light coming in, kind of like the old one. But anyone on the other side of that, you know, something. Can you update on that? An update on our two PI profits, they are in full swing. They made the connection out of O'Hare, and they're gonna head south up to Puyanque, and then involved their, but it's down there in peace. They're about to find their way. And I hope they're going really well. Uh, concrete construction has done a big job, and the phone is done. Uh, heads up, we, if they do cross the highway, uh, maybe we'll do a board. That's gonna be after the border thing, so you open that up, have a big board in there. Get your weight, and have the holidays, let all the traffic, and then I have, and then the schools, kind of wants to get out, and then we're like, maybe down the main street. And then also, I don't know, I think we've met, we're sensitive to the water, it's afternoon. As part of their continued, uh, extension of the pipeline that's going to, to our limits now, the next reach will come down next week. As part of that, they want to proactively, they're gonna build one of our corn granes, fifteen, six inch old, but I think land that's kind of very trouble, which, and they will keep all of that.
Nice.
So concrete construction, when there are extra, they will take care of them, four blocks, make it south, it's called south, if they're burning, uh, that'll be on there, so that's.
On the, uh, the borderline into the freeway, we didn't budget for it, but is it possible to tie in and put some stuff in for the, uh, the, uh...
It's not the freeway.
Oh, it's not the freeway. I was, okay, I was gonna say, I didn't think we were going out there, but...
It's a, it's a, just across the highway.
Okay, never mind. Never mind then. I was gonna say, if we're going onto the freeway, let's put the, uh, the storm grain in there at the same time. Alright.
And you know, I said, like, appreciate all that, I wanna take the cruise, so I was a kid, it was a long day, and you know, it's coming out. I said, I suppose we'll never make moves. Actually, but this was, it happened, it didn't help.
So the crews did a really good job. Like, I was down there for a while, and we took them hamburgers, and they were just working nonstop, and they were probably on hour sixteen at that point in time, and they just were go, 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 so.
We were gonna be back together about twelve thirty, you guys, everything back in order, two o'clock.
I don't know why everything has to happen when I'm, I'm out of town too, so. I guess. Anyone else like, uh, staff wives, come up? Thank you.
Mayor, council, just letting you know, with the great shakeout we had last month, um, had pretty good participation. We probably, maybe had about a tenths of a city that participated with, was a lot better than we had the year before, so we got some louder. So we'll, uh, see what we can get next year.
We, we switched, we switched last time, I helped that.
Yeah, I know, I don't know what the deal is, they were working just a minute ago.
How do you know if people are participating in the shakeout? Are they rolling on their lawn?
So, yes, hey, there we go.
The green stuff.
Oh, yes, the green key opening. So, yeah, we haven't put the cars in or windows.
Clearly I didn't participate.
Oh, so you're one of those that died.
It was, that's why the flags are up, sad.
Yeah. So we have the block captains go around and check their areas, and then they report in to the area, and then to the district, then into us, just to kind of get a count. What happened? Anyway, so it worked out fairly well, but we'll keep getting information out to people and keep working with them, so it was, I thought, better success than what we've had before, so. Um, the other, um, we got the new preparedness booklets, so we'll be getting those out in June to all the residents. Um, they're the bright pink ones, like, the one there, so we change the colors every year. And, uh, so they're easier to spot, but, um, we've got those updated, and we'll get those out to everyone, and then you can put a copy in your boxes, so you can take a look at it. Also, um, just want to make you aware, we'll have them come, um, to council meeting, we'll get the agenda. We had, uh, our EMS, uh, conference in St. George, and, uh, with two of our AMTs, and they, and they used one from Spanish Fork, but it was really our, our people. Um, they took first in a, a challenge where they did, uh, a traumatic, uh, scenario, a medical, and then a cardiac, and they took first out of all the ones in the state that were there, so. Um, the trophy is actually about five feet tall, but we'll let them kind of be recognized, because that's, that's a great accomplishment to do something like that. Yeah, so, we put it out there, so.
Did Linda say now she'll move over?
Yes, we told her now she can be part of our department, right? Yes, but anyway, it was, it was good to see that. It's a fun challenge, um, it's pretty strenuous, um, what they go through, but they did a good job, so. It was nice to see them represent Hason, so, thank you.
I'm here, council. Um, I just want to remind you of the pay it forward event on Saturday at eight thirty. I would like all of you there, if you can, to help hand out medals. I'm thinking, we, it, it will be quick, I mean, we have our one mile and then the five K, so, uh, once medals are handed out, then, you know, they're sort of dispersed, and so, um, whoever can come up will be great. So we have, I'm, I'm so excited, I, like I said, I've never been to the pay it forward challenge before, so we have almost four hundred people signed up, so I'm thrilled, and I'm really excited. And we have, I met my goal of getting, I mean, two hundred gift cards, so I'm really excited about that too. So I have more gift cards from Santa Claus than students, so, but this is the first year we've tried to really push the students in Santa Claus too. So, next year, we'll, we'll get more kids, so, but, um, if you can come, that's what I want to do different this year, is right when they're coming through the finish line, that we can hand out medals and congratulate them right on the spot, so. Whoever can come would be awesome, so that would be great. Thank you.
To me, um, I just want to mention that I saw, um, I was looking up five K, and I saw that there was a race of a point five K. And it was for people fifty and older, and I think that would be fun, to see how many older people we can get that mark. And I could do that one, yes. Well, you can just even just do the mile, it's a walk, I mean, yes. Yes, we have, like, most, a lot of the, our families and strollers, and, so that's, uh, oh, and you're all invited, everyone come, all the city employees especially, we'll see all their on Saturday. Okay.
Donna, will you get the hair for me, good?
Well, thank you. My library board member, Anne, pointed out to me that I need to get up and talk up our summer reading. I'm thinking I have one more city council meeting, but I don't. We start signups at the end of this month for summer reading this year. We always try to get a million minutes, which last year we got over a million minutes, so we'd love to have your participation, everyone's participation, and we also presently have a, we got a little grant from the state to recognize Spike One Fifty, to celebrate the hundred fifty years since the spike went in from Tory Point. And we have lots and lots of free pencils and bookmarks, and a really cool display, which, they sent us about fifty books that are mostly checked out right now, about information about the railroad and steam engines and everything, so, don't want to miss that, because it's pretty awesome. And, uh, summer reading's gonna be really great this year, the theme is the universe of stories, and we are going all out at the library, so come, and we're gonna decorate, we're gonna have all kinds of fun, so you don't want to miss it.
Thank you. Any other staff? Okay, not seeing any, we'll move on to, uh, council reports. Congressman Christensen, thank you for coming.
Apologize for my tardiness, it's kind of one of those marathon days. Um, I was actually over prepping for the Utah Valley CTE Expo. All of the high schools in the valley, including Pace and High School, are being represented at the Spanish Fork Fairgrounds, um, tomorrow afternoon, so if you want to take a chance to go over there. Uh, we have a hundred and fifty-nine entries in the woodworking department where I'm at, and, and a lot of prizes from local businesses. So, um, they've got welding and photography and floral and all that, so, a little plug out there for our, um, education. I think it's a great opportunity to go see them and support them. A shout out to our, uh, staff, I know that there were a lot of them that didn't want to go swimming that night, but were more than willing to jump into that hole and, and help fix that pipeline. Um, hopefully I wasn't a father, and they had plenty to eat, um, didn't do much else with the broken pipeline, but stand back and look. But nonetheless, it was enjoyable from my perspective, I stayed clean. Just shout out all them, and how quickly they did things, and grateful for the things that this city does, and, and keeps moving, and keeps the lights on, keeps the water running to the best of their ability, so, thank you.
I just have a few things. One is, um, thanks to staff for the fixing that water pipeline, and even though we're in the news, I think it came out that we're pretty positive in the news, or what you did, so. But, um, somebody asked me why I wasn't there, and I said, well, why do I need to be there? That's why we have great staff, so, I'm thinking there's a reason for having to show up and everything, so. Couple other things, one is our golf event for Pace is open for business is on October second, so if anybody in the council, the mayor, or staff knows anybody we'd like to invite to that event, well, it is, we try to bring people into Pace and show them who we are and what we are, and that we're, we have great people here, and we're, we're growing, so. Two other things, one is, um, we have, most of the park tax committee here tonight are, um, that worked on the things we're gonna do later today, but, um, I'd like to thank them. They put in a lot of time, and they're very thoughtful and studious, and they went out and looked at things, and it's not, you know, to me, just rubber stamps, we got these things, but they really went through everything and just did a really, really good job, so I'd like to thank all, all of you on the park tax committee. And then the last thing is, uh, some of us went down with, uh, with M-Tech down to Cedar City, they made their first presentation for, um, a building here in Pace, and the first building is gonna be, that they're requesting money for. First, they have to go down to the, all of Trade Tech College and get in line, go legislature, then there's three other processes, but the first one was last Thursday, there, the first billion they're looking at is a hundred thousand square feet, and it's all on the south end of Pace, and so we're excited about that, what they're working on there, so, anyway, thank you.
Okay, I want to thank the staff for all the work that they did on that. Uh, I didn't go and sit and watch either, Brian, but Dave and I made our drive-through a couple of times, and was, took some pictures of a mother sitting on the curb with her little baby, and she was playing with it in the water, and the kids that were out running and swimming and having a good time, but we really appreciate all of them for doing that. With Donna getting up, I want to thank the library board. I have been subbing on a bus of special interest, and just as an aide, and, uh, on our bus route, we go up a side street, and there's a boy on that bus that just, "Let me out, let me out," you know, and you ask him why, and he wants to go to the library. And I asked him, and he says he goes there all the time, and he loves it. So, we really appreciate you ladies and all that you do. Uh, there was one other thing. Uh-oh. I think we'd be, need to be more focused on letting all the citizens, other than the call. I mean, I know that they put the call out for the watering times and all of that, but I think maybe we need to put it in the city bill, and it probably was in there, and I just didn't read it, but, um, there's a lot of people that, since the water's been turned on, that are watering and watering, and not on their day. And I think we really need to make people aware, that that's why the city is asking that, and your lawns don't need that much water, especially with a storm coming. So anyway, that's just something that I think we need to focus on too. Thank you.
Kind of just like to say a few words again, uh, about the staff, and echo, uh, Councilman Hewitt's, uh, statement about, uh, the confidence that we have in the staff. I, I was, uh, actually in San Francisco at the time that, that it came through, and I felt very confident that, that our staff could handle it, and they did handle it, and in this day and age, it's extremely hard to stay out of the news, and so I, I, I think it's inevitable, but to have just a short-lived, uh, news story is, is worth an awful lot, so, appreciate it.
I'm afraid to see what happens when you leave again. You got a fire the first time, and a flood the second time. Somebody keep him in town. Um, yeah, I, I've said it once already, but I'm grateful for the staff, and it's not just, you know, I saw the sewer out there, and the water crew, and the roads crew, and they're all working together, uh, working long hours, I really appreciate them. I appreciate really everybody, the parks crew, they're working really hard to get our grounds looking really nice, um, our police, our fire, our engineers, we've got so much, uh, growth going on that we're looking at. Like, our staff is really busy, and if you, if you don't know us, sometimes you sit on the outside, which I used to do, and, and you don't see it, but they're really busy, and they're working really hard for the residents of Pace, and I appreciate them. Um, just a reminder, uh, the Memorial Day event is coming up, on Memorial Day. If you've never been, I didn't really go until I, I was on, running for city council, and, uh, it is a cool event, like, it's very patriotic, it's very humbling, it's very well done, and so if you, if you don't, if you haven't been yet to go, it's, it's Monday morning at...
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty.
At the cemetery.
At the cemetery, and it's a, it's a great opportunity to be part of the community. Just another note with the library, library does a great job. We kind of toss it out an idea, and, and we may be pursuing this at some point in time, but we have Kyle Vincent, does murals around town, and he does a really good job. We kind of threw out the idea of putting like a Dowdell Art Pace mural in the breezeway, maybe, that's kind of an attraction where people would go, and they say, "Oh, I didn't know the carol was over here, or I didn't know this was here," or I... And they can go and take pictures, and they can go, you know, we, we thought it'd be a good attraction to the city, um, for advertisement as well as aesthetics and, and, and commercial retail, so we might come to you or just go through city, but that might be community. Other than that, it's all happening. Thank you.
Well, I said it all.
Next time I'll start with you first.
Well, I was thinking, I went up this night turn before I start, and then I can say it all, and then you guys have to think about stuff. So thank you, everybody that was there, I was out on the water with Brad, and I was playing in the, I was playing in the water, too, because that was long, and I just, like, I thought, wow, you guys are awesome, and they're getting all wet, and I think, it was getting a little cool, because it was, it was going nighttime, and the water's cold anyway, so, thank you, everybody that was there, I appreciate it.
Okay.
I have one other.
Go ahead.
I was hoping to get mentioned, but I, we rallied the troops, and I think it was really nice of Salem and, I don't know who brought equipment, Spanish Forks provided supplies and, and things like that. I know some of the supply houses sent their guys clear a heber to pick up valves for our broken water line, so, those that were out there, we appreciate that camaraderie between cities and things.
Thanks for mentioning that. Okay, we'll move on to scout certificates. I don't see any scouts up there, so we'll go ahead and...
Can I mention one other thing before you can go in?
You bet.
Uh, we do have an open house scheduled for the fifth Wednesday, the twenty-ninth of May, if you remember that, keep that on your calendar. Uh, we put that out, uh, but just so that you're all aware, and you'll be there. Now, Brian's not gonna be there, he already said, but it's kind of an open house format that Doug, you, we did a few years ago, and try to, um, provide information to the citizens.
Yeah, for those of you who are here, that are citizens, we're just, it's the budget year, the budget's being passed and approved. If you have any questions, we want you to come and ask questions, and, and really, if you have any ideas as well, too, I mean, we've got some good ideas, but many minds may, for some great ideas, so we just love to, to be open and transparent. If you say, "Hey, why are you spending money on this?" We can go and talk to it, and we'll have all the department supervisors there as well, too, um, so you can go and say, "Hey, what's your need?" And they can say, "Well, here's why we're replacing this line," or, or whatever it is, right?
Okay, great, uh, we'll move on then to, uh, the action items, uh, resolutions, parts, arts, recreation and culture, PIRC, tax committee recommendations on funding projects. Teva, are you gonna talk to us about it? Okay.
Mayor and city council, I would like to present our recommended, our recommendations for the park tax funding for this upcoming year. Yep. And we had quite a few applications this year, and this is what we have come to, uh, recommend to you. The Pace and Community Band asked for eight hundred dollars, this will be for, um, new music for the band, and we awarded eight hundred dollars. The Huish Performing Arts and Cultural Education Center asked for seventy-five hundred dollars, and we awarded them seventy-five hundred dollars. This will be for LED lighting that will be removable, and, um, some chairs that will, um, help, um, the sideshow function. Last year, we awarded, uh, money for marley floors and mirrors, and once we, once they can get the sideshow up and running, it will provide money coming in to the Huish, so that they can upgrade the Huish more, and be more self-sufficient.
How, can, do you tell me about the sideshow? Like, what is it, and how are they going to make money? I don't know anything about the sideshow.
So the Huish Theater has the big auditorium inside.
Right.
But on the front...
I mean, I've seen the sideshow, but I don't know...
Right, so the front edge is all glass, and it's, um, rooms, and they want to, to rent it out to dance companies, or performing arts, or singing, and so they're trying to, um, renovate that. So last year, we got the hardwood floors that roll up, and mirrors, and then this year, we awarded money for LED lighting, like track lighting, like, uh, drama theater, theater lighting, and some chairs, so that they can actually use it for piano recitals, or a dance recital, or, or things like that, and rent it. The rent would go back into the Huish, so that they can continue to, um, upgrade.
So are the lights the only thing missing from them being rented out? Like, where you...
I'm not...
Then I'm just, are we close to them being rented out?
Yeah, they still need to finish the bathroom, so there's...
Okay, okay.
Um, the Pace and Civic Corral, they asked for nine thousand dollars, we awarded them nine thousand dollars. This will be for new music for them, to add, um, parts to the existing music that they do have, and then they are, have asked for some storage file containers to organize all the music that they've been, um, collecting for twenty-eight years, so we ordered them that. The People Preserving the Teenage asked for twelve thousand dollars, we awarded twelve thousand dollars. They are going to replace the velvet drapes on the stage, and the back drapes on the stage, and then if there's many left over, we've asked them to do the drapes on the north side of the auditorium. Those drapes have been there since I went there, which was kind of a long time ago, but not really that long time ago. Anyway, they, they're really worn out, and they have holes in them, and...
Too late, you already said it, so I can't do that.
I am really young, I was saying that. But I think they've been there for a really long time. Anyway, so we've awarded them that. Um, Starwrite Dance Company asked for ten thousand dollars, they are a five oh one C three, but due to some regulations in the park tax, um, bylaws, we awarded them eleven hundred dollars. This will be used for costuming for students in their dance company, and they will be reusable, um, dance costumes. Um, Pace and Community Theater asked for twenty-nine thousand dollars, we awarded them fifteen thousand dollars. They have asked for some more, um, lighting, some more, um, sound systems that they will use with their production.
That will be able to be moved to a new school when it gets better? That will be able to be moved to a new school when it gets built? For the Huish or wherever?
Yeah. We are hoping that they could use the Huish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that it's not permanently anchored to a building that's going to be torn down and...
Right, that's a good thought. All right, this is the city projects that were submitted to the park tax committee. The pickleball courts, we knew were a two-year project. We awarded $150,000 last year and will fulfill our commitment this year with $150,000 and they are due to be opened around July. Super excited, super excited about that. They are lit and there is a basketball court and I think that they will be getting used a lot. I know I drove by Spanish Fork Pickleball Courts and it's a happening place. So we are excited for Memorial Park on the southeast corner. Make sure you drive by, they're working on it every day and it should be, I think they'll be used a lot. The city also asked for a trail connection design fee and this is regarding the property along the trail, south of, south and east of the highway, there is a disconnect there because of the property owners and we are hoping that if we present them with some designs that that will sway them into selling or allowing us to build and to complete that trail. The trail is used quite a bit. I've been on it quite a bit and it's, it's very busy. There's actually a little playground back there, too, it's super fun. They've asked, the city asked for $12,500. That included one conceptual design. We included $1,500 more to include two conceptual designs. One will go on the south bank of the creek, the other would be a north design if we had to, if we had to bridge that. And so we wanted that to be a complete study to present to the owners and so that's why we awarded extra money for that.
And this is on Dry Creek, yes?
This is Dry Creek and if you've visited it, we need to finish that so that it will connect the city. And cities that have trails are, they're super widely used. I know I go up to Cornet Canyon a lot, I've gone to Spanish Fork, which is super fun. People like to be out and about, so we'd like to finish that for the city. The restroom remodel at the golf course, the city asked for $30,000. We as a committee would like to, we couldn't come to consensus, I'll just tell you that. We know that we need to keep the city's amenities up, that it's important for the people of Payson and those that visit Payson and we need to present a clean, friendly, happy face for the citizens. At this time, we would recommend that, we received Utah County tax revenue of $10,000. We're hoping to get that extended and then we are looking at a restaurant tax revenue of $10,000 that should be coming in this year and hoping to get the Utah County tax revenue extended, so that would give us $20,000. And then next year for the park committee to revisit and hopefully match $20,000. That would provide $40,000 for the city to remodel the golf course restrooms next year. We felt as a committee that it would be better visually to recommend that we cover the playground at Memorial Park with a shade structure and this would be more visible to the citizens of Payson and because our pickleballs will be, pickleball courts will be finished in July, that would provide family-friendly activities. So you could play on the pickleball courts, the playground structure at Memorial Park would be shaded and I know that we're trying to upgrade Memorial Park because it is the gathering place of Payson. So the park committee would like to recommend that we provide $30,000 to build a shade structure over Memorial Park's playground and that's our recommendation. Next year, we would revisit the restroom model. And that would finish all of the money that we received last year, which was, I don't know, but $249,909 and we would extend almost all of it. So good things are happening in Payson. We are so grateful that we have the park tax, it's improving Payson a lot. We just want more visual things so that Payson City citizens know that we are being responsible with the tax money that's coming in and anyway, that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Tara.
Any questions?
Can I allow to say anything?
Not right to this point. We'll have some council discussion.
I just wanted to say, good job.
Okay, that's great, that's great.
I love that you did that and said that, love it.
Okay, any council discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to, I appreciate you guys and the work that you've done and I understand that everybody that applied got awarded so many except for the golf course. I think I could probably count on two hands, the number of people in this room, maybe, that have been up and visited that golf course, other than, you know, even if you don't golf, visit it. And I don't think people are aware of people that come to our golf course from out of state to golf. There are a lot of people and non-golfers do not understand that. In fact, I don't think that they've even been up to the golf course. I made a suggestion to the mayor last night that I think it would be wonderful, I want to know if the park tax ladies have been, have you driven up and around the golf course?
I went up and checked it out. I looked at the restrooms and...
No, I don't mean the restrooms. Have you driven on the course?
Checked it out.
You stood and checked it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you didn't get in a carton ride to see how beautiful. I, I made a suggestion to the mayor last night that I think it would be a fun thing to do and I don't know how on board Tracy would be with this, but to get some of the men's association and ladies' association, maybe a little bit later in the night and set aside, or later in the afternoon and set aside a time that citizens could come up and have one of us drive them around that course so that they could see it and understand what Payson has. I think that would be a good idea and I, I think that would be wonderful to do, but I hope that, I know that Jill's applied for some monies and that we can get those restrooms done this year. I will be glad to come up and plaster, do whatever. Thank you.
Are we allowed, like, where you're addressing us, are we allowed to...
Well, it's not a public carry, but...
Chief Park Committee.
I'm on the list.
Oh, okay.
I'm on the Park Committee.
Okay, fine.
Are we, are we okay?
Well, as long as we don't take too long, you've made your decision, but you can come up and talk to us. Please come up, please come up.
I have to go up.
An announced name?
I will announce my name as Jody Wickerbeck, how's that? I come from a golfing family. My husband right now golfs, so I didn't take this lightly. I went home and asked my husband, who has a golf every morning, Tracy probably sees his name, I get a thing to my email saying, "Hey, you have tee time at this." So I asked my husband, "How are the bathrooms?" "I don't know." "Well, you're going golfing," I goes, "I don't know." Like, as a man, he was like, "I don't know." I understand, like, looking at this, we've just buried...
There's trees on that little floor.
Well, he, he was like, "Well, when I'm out golfing, like, out the areas," he's like, "Oh yeah, they just redid a floor in one of them." Like, so he noticed something. Out golfing, not so much inside. One thing we did think about is, like, the future, you know, they're talking, if they want to put a reception center there, are those bathrooms going to be adequate for those needs and things like that? So it's like, as a future, we looked at it as if the money next year, they could ask for money and do a better job because on our defense, we chose pickleball courts, so you're going to have $150,000 next year, but not just a $30,000 and we don't know how much it is.
And we appreciate that.
I wanted the pickleball courts, so that's great.
We know, so we do not take it lightly and one thing we felt is if we did give them some money, say if we just did $10,000, could they, what could they do with that amount of money? Like, would it just be put a Band-Aid over it or, so it was something we really...
Well, we appreciate all the work you did.
Yeah, we appreciate your work.
Really, we do.
Not an easy decision.
And, and the golf course is a, is a very good amenity that the city has, but there are other amenities that need some help, too, so we're, we're fine.
I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I love that you come with solutions, like, that's awesome. There's a lot of people, like, whatever, and in fact, she went out and looked at restaurant taxes and all these other things. Love that, I really appreciate that, shows a lot of conscientiousness and thought and that you were trying to find your best solutions. And I also appreciate Jody, she called me up and she just said, "Hey, I just want you to know, this is where we're at, we thought about it, we talked to it," and that meant a lot to me to have somebody, because sometimes we just don't care, you know? Everybody knows what's going on, but they tell each other, their neighbors, but they don't, they rarely come to us, you know, or send me an email or anything. So I really appreciated that. Let me say, I'm going to ask just a couple of questions, just out of curiosity. Number one, and I agree with this, they have little kids, so I love the shade covered, but was that on the list of proposals or was that something that you...
It was listed last year.
Okay.
But the city gave us two things this year.
Okay.
Maybe I address that a little bit, Doug, is they didn't think they had the authority to go back on something that wasn't presented to them?
Right, well, that's what I wondered.
They made a suggestion because it's on a older list, so that's why it's not up here as something, but, but so they...
Well, that's why, I was just curious about the process, you know, like, do we go off track and find wherever we want? But that makes sense whereas on the list before.
With the city money, it's in the bylaws that the city council can decide what they would like to do with that money, we're just recommending.
Right, right. No, I understand.
Have this list from last year, so...
Yeah, I, I'm just curious about the process.
Yeah.
And then, and then the one thing I'll say, and I think we can figure this out, but there's been a big push to develop against some commercial and economic growth and I think at some point in time, whether it's this year or next year, and I understand that that's kind of a hot topic, but we're using that to recruit businesses, you know, we've got, like Brian, Councilman Hewitt mentioned at the beginning, we've got our open for business where we're bringing businesses and home builders and we're trying to say, "Hey, you know, this is a great place to be" and so I think that does need to be addressed at some point in time. So I'm just throwing that out there, but...
No, I agree that we need to keep up Payson City's amenities. I'm not against it, but I really can't be for it.
Sure.
Because I think we can find money other ways.
Which, I love that.
I believe, I believe we can.
Yeah.
And I, I think with the park tax, because it is a voter-initiated...
Great.
That we need to spend it where it can be more visible for the citizens of Payson.
Sure.
The shade structure, there's a whole bunch.
It's a great choice.
I'm, I'm sure the city has a gazillion projects for this money. I'm just, we thought the pickleball is coming on schedule and how awesome would it be to have the shade structure over the park?
Sure.
Because it's a gathering place, the Payson City spent a lot of money on Memorial Park. They just spent all that money on the new Bowery, there's talk of doing, redoing the other ones, we're putting pickleball and a basketball court, they're lit, so people will be there a lot. The trees just got trimmed.
I think a very, very worthy project. I bet citizens come and talk to me about that as well.
And then it would be visible, there would be a placard on it, they could see that that's where the money that we are responsible for was spent. I, I...
What's the longevity on those? That's kind of my question, I mean, the nets, the nets, they have to come down every, what, fall or...
They come down every winter and they're just like the pools that go over the little banner things.
Five years, ten years, I know that the next one, you're only buying the net, you're not buying the poles, which would make them a lot cheaper.
They'd be a lot cheaper, uh-huh. So the initial would be the steel poles and things.
Parks and Recs, we're okay to take those down every year, it's not going to be a due burden and we're good.
The ones at the pool are 10 years old and still usable.
And they still look good, too. They retain their color.
And, and I, I can't think of any covered playgrounds that we have in the city, so to have one like that is important. You've got first chance people and we do have a high rate of skin cancer around here, so. They say that the high altitude in the north that they, you know, I've had two or three cut out of my face, so, but...
Anyway, this has, this has to be voted on again to be renewed and so we want to keep it a positive thing for the citizens of Payson. It's not that we don't want the golf course improved, we just are hoping that there's another way to do that.
I just have a few comments. One is, you know I'm the bathroom guy, so we got our bathrooms fixed in here and then anytime we fix bathrooms, there are studies that say that the bathroom is whatever, especially women look at when they go into places, that's how they judge everything. So we're judged partly on our bathrooms and the, and the golf course, we have a lot of people come from all over the state and it's a very important asset that Payson has that kind of golf course. We just had some people from, I think it was Ireland or, that were, that came and they were going to go to some other golf courses, but they came and they, they canceled the other ones and came back here, so, and then we have that open and we, we have a lot of influential people that come down to our golf course. It is an important asset and we need to help the citizens understand it's an asset to the, to the city, but saying all that, I think one thing, the park tax to me is, is really, really critical, that's a citizen initiative and we have the citizens making recommendations and I want to follow the recommendations of this committee because that's what it was set up for, is that they're going to be the heart and blood and soul of what this park tax money is for and so I'm going to go with what they say and I think it's very important to how our citizens of the committee represent the citizens and follow them, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, yeah, well, there is no other discussion, I'm ready for a motion.
I would make the motion that we approve Resolution 515-2019, adopting the Parks, Parks, Recreation and Culture Tax Committee's recommendations for the funding of the 2019 projects according to the guidelines set forth in our...
I'll say it.
Okay, there's been a motion that's been seconded and this calls for a real call starting with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hyatt.
Hey, question before you make the...
Okay, question?
Just a question before you make the, the, I think the resolution proposal does not have the covering with the...
We did not put the covering up.
Do you want to add that in? Can we add that in?
I'll add, if you have discretion.
Want to include that in your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to amend my motion that we have the covering for the...
Shade structure.
The shade structure at Memorial Park over the playground area.
I'll say it.
Okay, motion and seconded, Councilwoman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you, Tara.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to number two, request to extend the municipal boundaries to encompass the barstels included in the proposed Condi annexation located north of Salem Canal at approximately 1,400 acres.
Okay, I'm the city council, I do have a presentation. I'll try not to be too lengthy, I know a lot of the information was included in your packet, but we do have a good representation from our citizenry here tonight, so just wanted to provide a little more information. So the area that we're looking at is highlighted in, is in red there. It's known as the Condi Annexation. A little bit of background, the annexation was accepted for further review by the city council. Annexation was certified by the city recorder. We did conduct the required 30-day protest period and there were no qualified protests that were filed either with Utah County or Payson City. The notice of a pending annexation was sent to the property owner. There is only one property owner involved in this annexation, but city ordinance does require that we send notice to all property owners within an annexation. And then staff has met with the annexation sponsor, who is Jeffrey Capazoli. We have met with him on a, on a number of occasions to address the requirements of state code and city ordinance as he has gone through this process. So last comment is annexations are regulated by not only city ordinance, but by Utah Code and so there are several requirements that the applicant has had to address during this process. So we also have... So we also have, as part of our review process, is back in 2009, the city council did adopt what is known as the Eastside Comprehensive Plan, that regulates the land uses or provides guidance for land uses, infrastructure, different development decisions for the area that we commonly refer to as Haskellville. So it's the area between Payson and Salem. So that's the area that's shown there. So that plan was developed back in 2009, so that is something that we refer to as we process this annexation. So the current use is on the site, there's an existing single-family home that's located on the southwest corner of the property. And then there on the right, you can see that the majority of the property is just used for, for crop production, and so it's just being used for agricultural purposes. Other site, I guess constraints or challenges that the annexation sponsor will have is there's an existing open ditch that's used to deliver the water for the Salem irrigation. And so that is located on the, the south side of the property along Salem Canal Road. It will have to be piped in order to widen Salem Canal Road, similar to what was done with the Ashley Ridge development that's located west of this property. So the picture on the right-hand side shows the extent of the Ashley Ridge subdivision and where the sidewalk ends, that will eventually be extended. There is one parcel there that is owned by Raymond, Raymond Lovelace, that is not part of this annexation, it's already in the city, and it's not proposed to be developed. So there still will be one section of that, that piping that will not be completed, but the applicant will have to complete those improvements in front of the Condi Annexation if it is approved by the city council. So petition details, it is a very small annexation, it's 5.31 acres, and it only includes one parcel. I believe that the applicant did consider other parcels there, but most of the property owners in, in that east side would like to continue their agricultural pursuits, and they're not interested in annexation or development. But the current property owner is interested, and so it does show here that they did meet the minimum requirements of state code as far as qualifying for annexation. This is a copy of the annexation plat, that is a requirement of state code that they submit to the city showing how it will connect to, it has to be contiguous to and connect to the municipal boundaries, and so that does indicate that it does meet that requirement of state code. So land uses and zoning designation. So the general plan, we typically look at general plan when we're looking at annexations or if we're looking at zone changes and then other land use applications. But the general plan, it is part of the Eastside Comprehensive Plan, so it is part of the township neighborhood. So the township neighborhood anticipates that there will be larger lots with large areas of natural or passive open space. So larger lots, the applicant is looking at that, the lots would be at least a third acre in size, and so that is larger than what we were seeing in other neighborhoods in the Eastside Plan. One of the issues that were, was raised at planning commission by some of the residents in the area and was discussed, is with the small annexation, it's really hard for the applicant to realize the full extent of the township neighborhood as anticipated by that Eastside Comprehensive Plan, as far as providing large areas of natural or passive open space and meadows. The proposed use is a single-family residential development. It is the, the annexation sponsor is actually the developer of the Ashley Ridge subdivision to the west, and so you would be looking at having single-family residential development, little larger lots, like in Ashley Ridge, but similar type homes. And so you have a chance to look at those, and I do have a couple of pictures just to show you. So the proposed zoning in the annexation, the applicant is requesting R19 residential, which would allow him to have those third acre lots, but with ninety feet of frontage. So the applicant is not wanting to make any changes to the size of lots that's anticipated in the Eastside Plan, but is requesting the more dense zoning in order to have ninety-foot frontages, recognizing that he only has five, five, a little over five acres there, and just with the configuration, in order for him to get the number of lots needed to make it financially viable, he would need the ninety, ninety-foot frontages, similar to Ashley Ridge. R115 was, is another option in the ordinance. I'm just putting that in there as a staff suggestion, the R115, so the third acre lots. However, it does require a hundred feet of frontage, so the applicant would have to modify the, the unit count in that development. The planning commission recommendation for zoning was to come in as the A5H Annexation Holding Zone. That was not to suggest that they were not supportive of the applicant's proposal, is they wanted to see the development layout. And so they felt like if it came in as the Annexation Holding Zone, when the applicant came in with the development plan, he could also process a zone change. And so then we could tie the zoning and have the appropriate zoning for the type of development. So that was the recommendation of that board. This is a conceptual layout, I'm gonna just show it briefly and then move on, because I don't want to get into, you know, site plan development. But this does show how the applicant is showing the extension of a road from Salem Canal Road there on the south, extending up. You will need to reconfigure a couple of lots in the Ashley Ridge Development in order to create a T-intersection there with that east-west road. But that will show you the number of the lots that the applicant is looking at, and how it is similar, or the lots are increased in size to the Ashley Ridge Development that is to the west.
So, so is that a T or an L? Am I confused? Does it hit the end of that, does it, is it T going up, so the one straight ahead of the road is...
So it, it, so the new road through that development, through the Ts into the east-west road.
So there won't be any north of that road?
So it will not continue, yeah. That, that was an item of discussion at the planning commission meeting, and has been a discussion with the applicant, with staff. It would have been preferable to have that north-south road continue further north, so we're creating more of the grid system. However, to the north of where that T-intersection is, there's already an existing single-family lot that has been platted, approved, and sold. And so that was something that we talked to the applicant about. We've looked at some other alternatives of how we can still have that road go north. There's probably gonna have to, you know, there, you're not gonna have that direct contact to the north, but I think with future developments or annexations to the north, we require that connection. But just because there've already been some approvals in this location, it's, it's gonna be too much of a challenge to, to do at this time.
Well, I understand that. I mean, I would be concerned if I bought a house and all of a sudden came the end of a T-road, I'd be a little upset about that myself. Is there, is it possible to move it sixty-two feet to the one direction, or does it changes lots, it doesn't work?
We've, we've looked at, we've looked at a number of options in order to do that, and the applicant has even talked to the new owner to see, you know, if there's a way that he can, you know, do an exchange of lots, to change that out. It's gonna be very, that's, he's gonna sell that as a developable lot, and so...
Right, so it's a developer, I can see why you wouldn't want to.
And then the challenge also was too, is if you shift that road further to the east, I mean, if you actually created curvature in it, it puts a big burden on the, on the Hascalls that own that property. They were really trying to stay along property lines, so everyone's just doing their portion of the road, and shifting that further to, to the east would create an additional burden to the Hascalls in the future, they'd be building more of that road. So there was a number of things, we'll continue to work with the applicant to see if there's a way that, you know, we can design that in a way that can provide that continuous flow of traffic. But what we've looked at so far, there's just been a few obstacles, it's gonna make that a little more challenging than we first thought.
This looks like it would be choppy sixty years down the road, so...
Right. So these are some of the homes, I know these are all outdated, we probably can have some exterior materials on these by now, but these are some of the homes that are included in the Ashley Ridge Development. These are homes that the applicant was involved in, or sold some of these lots for development. But this is the product that would be similar to what would be built in the next phase. So compliance with the Eastside Comprehensive Plan and city ordinances, you know, during the review process of annexations, we do look at the property, we evaluate it, we identify any concerns that we may have as the applicant's moving forward. And so as you can see, we've provided the applicant with several red lines of things that would need to be addressed following annexation and with any development proposals, so. And staff is suggesting the preparation of an annexation agreement that would be reviewed by the city council at a subsequent meeting, that would address any of the conditions of approval that we felt would be necessary to, you know, as part of the annexation. A lot of these are already addressed in our city ordinances, so they'll just be a requirement. But anything beyond those city requirements, we would want to have included in that annexation agreement. So public input, recommendation and decision. So state code does require at least one public hearing to be conducted for these land use applications. That public hearing was completed or conducted at the planning commission meeting. The copy of those minutes were included in your packet, so hopefully you had a chance to look at those, because I know that there was a lot of discussion, a lot of interest for, from property owners that live in the Haskellville area. And so we wanted to make sure you had a copy of that. The planning commission, after that discussion and deliberation, they did recommend that the city council approve the annexation with a zoning designation of A5H Annexation Holding Zone, to ensure that, to, that the development proposal is processed with a zone change. They wanted to incorporate the conditions of the Eastside Comprehensive Plan, and also gave direction for staff to check into some comments that were provided at the, at the planning commission meeting. There were some concerns about engineering and water and sewer, and wanted to make sure that the extension of the municipal boundaries would be done in a way that we could make sure that there wasn't any significant impact on our water systems, that we can provide adequate services to the homes in this development. So the options for the city council is you can, based on the deliberation tonight, this presentation, if you felt like there's additional information that needed to be provided, that you could remand it back to staff and/or the planning commission to do some additional review. You can approve with conditions, or you can deny the annexation, it is a legislative action. And then any motion of the city council will need to include findings that indicate reasonable basis for your decision. So next steps, just as an overview, if this annexation is approved, the process is not completed yet. And so there's a few other things that need to happen. Annexations have to be approved by ordinance. The reason we do not have that ordinance in your packet tonight is, once that ordinance is adopted, there's, there is a time clock that starts, and we actually have to have the annexation to the lieutenant governor's office within thirty days. But we have not prepared the annexation agreement yet, Utah County Surveyor has not reviewed the plat yet, and so those will be brought to you at a subsequent meeting, and then that clock will start ticking, we'll get it to the lieutenant governor in time, within that thirty-day timeframe, and then finally record the annexation plat. So there's still some work to do, but we cannot move forward with that until we have a final decision from the city council. That is my presentation. The annexation sponsor, Jeffrey Capizoli, is here, if you have any questions for him. And then looking for a final decision on the proposed annexation.
Any council discussion?
I have a question. What is the variance between this proposal and the Eastside Comprehensive Plan? Like, what are the differences? Because I noticed that there was a discussion point at, at the meeting, but I don't see where, like, I don't know what the differences are.
The difference is, and I don't have it in the presentation, but, but typically annexations come in, they're, they're larger annexations. So when you're putting a development proposal together, you can incorporate open space. And so that's the challenge that this one has, because in the township neighborhood, it anticipates that there will be larger lots with open space or natural areas that are protected, you know, through the development process. With the applicant having such a small annexation, it's hard for him to provide that open space area. I think he has hit the mark on having the larger lots and having those, the, the higher quality homes. It's just incorporating open space into such a small parcel, whereas if it was a larger annexation, they could design it that way. So it's really just the, the open space element of, of the township neighborhood.
So it wasn't anything to do with the ninety feet versus a hundred feet?
No, I think with a hundred feet, you could, you know, if they are incorporating the open space by having a hundred feet, you could maybe give more of an open feel, but it would be concentrated open space.
His, his homes that he has built in Ashley Ridge are beautiful.
Yes.
They are very, very nice. So I think to have a continuation minus one lot, anyway, would be great.
Yeah, he, he took a, a project to the very tail end, the eleventh hour, you know, and, and actually made it something really nice for that, for that neighborhood, so, yeah, I definitely need to be commended for that.
A couple of issues. One, I don't like him taking good neighbors and moving them to the fields.
Are you moving?
No, one of my neighbors is, they bought one of those homes out there, but kudos, kudos to them, but. I'm a little concerned about that section, I hate seeing us leave sections missing. Is there anything we can do to fill that, that gap? I know at this point in time, it's gonna be the cheapest point in history for him to do it.
So, so missing link where?
Well, you said that there was a section that was missing, so is it that little tank of the enclosed...
It's, it's just, so are you talking about...
Right, the sidewalk in the bearing of the pipe.
Okay, so you're talking about...
Right here, you said there was a section here in...
Yeah, in front of Raymond Lovelace's house.
Right, and I mean, we can't, fortunately we do that, we got some people right there with their hands up, but...
Well, you've got the Central Utah Project that's coming here there, so there will be some piping of that, and...
Right.
And you may have some curb and gutter in, the sidewalk may not extend, but, yeah, so there's another project, but it's not a requirement of the applicant, so maybe I should specify that.
Right, no, no, and I understand that.
The applicant would not be required to come in here and do that. But the Central Utah Project, ULS line that's going in there, will make some adjustments to that, to that right-of-way and the improvements that are there, the piping.
So are they gonna do, I, I just, to me, it seems strange, you're on a sidewalk, it's gonna stop and dump kids into a ditch, and then it's gonna pick up a hundred and eighty feet down the road and do it again, and...
So it will be piped, and I know that Travis even met with, you know, Central Utah Water Conservancy District today to talk about that project, and other locations in the community. So we've been having conversations with them about that.
Perfect, that's what I just don't like, oh, well, we don't need to worry about this right now, I, that's not my mentality, so that's where I always have issues. Sorry.
Any further council discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, can you go for it?
Yes.
Just to clarify, on the Eastside Comprehensive Plan, in the minutes, that was brought up a lot, and as far as I understand, and I, I know we want to follow it as much as we can, but again, those are, that's just guidelines, right? Is that correct? It's not an ordinance, it's just guidelines.
That is correct.
I think everybody, when they come in, they act, they say, you know, it's in the Eastside Comprehensive Plan, so we have to follow it, and so I just want to clarify that that's guidelines, not...
You know, and it was evident at the meeting, you know, and it's, it's actually, you know, from a staff perspective, it's great when you have property owners coming in, they're rallying around a planning document, and saying, hey, we were part of that, you know, and, and we were very involved, and we supported, and we... So, I mean, that's very helpful to see those property owners and residents come in and say that. But yes, it, it's similar to even the general plan. It is a living document that can be amended and can be changed, because this was adopted in 2009. I don't think anyone, you know, knew what to expect, you know, a decade later. And so, you know, we do see that, you know, things will be changed, but I think it is healthy to always refer to the plan and say what may have worked then may, may not work now, or, or these are the things that we still feel strongly about, need to continue. So, yes, thank you.
Well, can I, can I chip on that for just a second? So, to a certain extent, I look at this like we do with the park tax committee, like you had a bunch of citizens that came down and sat down and they, they looked at this, I think we should be as true to it as possible. But I do agree, and we have to understand that things will flex a little bit, like nothing's gonna be perfect, but we ought to try to be as true to that as we can.
We think Lovelace wasn't considered at this point.
That's true.
Right.
That changes a lot.
That's a major change.
So I have a question for Jeff. Are you okay with the, with the holding zone? I know you'd rather have the, you know, zoning right now, but are you okay with the holding zone?
Help me understand the holding zone.
Jill can explain to you.
So the holding zone is basically just an agricultural zone that it comes in. So the only thing that it changes with your request is when you're bringing in your development proposal, going through the, the process for preliminary plan and final plat approval, you will be processing a zone change application at the same time. So they can, they can be run concurrently, so it should not affect the, the timing of getting through the process, but it allows the app, or the city council to see the development proposal in detail along with that zoning.
Meaning the, the actual site plat of how each parcel will be placed?
Yes.
And that gives them an option to reject that plan?
And it, it would, so with the zoning, if they felt like that that wasn't consistent with the Eastside Plan, you know, just, just as even tonight, they could reject it, they could do that with the zone change application.
From the R9 to R15, or are we meeting those requirements on an R9? I thought that that's part of the township plan. I thought that that's part of the township plan.
Well, with the R19, yeah, to, to develop as you have proposed right now, you'd have to have the R19 in order to do the, to do the 90-foot frontage. With the zone change, they, they could do the same things they're doing, they're looking at tonight. They could zone it R19, R115, or, or another zone. But they want, the recommendation of the Planning Commission was they want to see, because that was a missing piece at the Planning Commission meetings, they didn't see the development layout. They didn't have that information, but we're really, we're reviewing the annexation now and the development later, and they wanted to have an opportunity to see the development layout before they assigned the zoning.
So you're making it real muddy. So they can reject the R19 if they want, and they could push it to an R115?
They could, just like the council could tonight.
Okay, they can reject the R115 too?
They could reject the R115. Zoning is purely legislative, and any legislative action could be denied or changed.
What will that do for Charlene in terms of her timetable if she can't close on her property, which she's trying to get closed on? Because we've got an agreement with her that we have to have satisfaction with the amount of sizes and lots, the quantity of lots that are on there to make the project profitable for the developer. So, so if she has to wait longer, so do you have a timetable for her on that? That, because she's going to have to wait longer for?
Well, it would be, it would be just be what the, what the timeline is to process a preliminary and a final plat.
Generally, how long does that take?
So.
If she doesn't?
There's a lot of factors. I guess best-case scenario would be three months, but there's a lot of factors that are involved in that timeline. So we really try to be careful with telling, you know, with committing to timelines.
And I guess the reason I was asking that, because we have a planning commission, and I'd like to try to follow the recommendations, because that's what they're there for, spend a long time looking at things. So that's why I asked.
It's a good question, because it's, we're doing this for her more than, than my company, because my daughter's related to her, and she, she needs to sell the property. So we're trying to do something first so she can retire. And of course, the longer we prolong this, the worst case that is for her. So only because our agreement with her was until July, but certain things had to happen by that time. We had to have plat approval, all this stuff had to be done. So now that agreement is going to get washed out the door, more or less, because you guys can't, we can't fulfill that part of the agreement, or she can, in terms of, because of the slowness of what's happening here in the city. So I just, that's what I need to know, so I can go back to her and say, okay, we've got to have a new agreement, because this is happening, because annexation is not up here.
Which, which you may have to anyway, because regardless of zoning, if you still got to get through preliminary plan and final plat, and you can't do that by July.
Well, we thought we had a buffer, because we, you know, it's like we said, we just don't know. But we gave six months for this to get just to that point, where we actually had a plat in there that was being looked at by the City Council, and they can move forward and say, yes, we like that. And they could say, oh, yeah, we're confident it's going to go through, but we're nowhere near that right now. So, yeah. But I just need to know that we're forward with her. You know, we're not in any rush, really. We are, because of the crate of homes that's coming into the area. In June, we really wanted to have something to actually show and say, okay, we've got 12 more lots, they're larger, we want to build some pretty nice homes here, and we wanted to pre-sell them, but that doesn't seem like that's going to happen before June 6th through the 22nd, that we can come up with something. So that was our goal. We're obviously not going to meet that.
Okay, any further discussion from the council? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Before you do that, can I have one other question?
You have.
And Jeff, if you've come up to the, we're recording, and so you do need to come up to the microphone.
Is my voice not loud enough?
Well, we're, it's.
I just wanted, is the annexation, she wanted to make sure she's not annexing the property if we can't develop. You get what I'm saying? She, she didn't want to do that. She'd rather keep it as a five-and-quarter acre agricultural, unless she can go forward with this, with this process. So I'm here for her too, at the same time, because she's, she's got to be able to do that too. So if this annexation, you guys approve it today with this stuff, and then it comes down to that time and then it gets canceled, are we actually going through the annexation process and continuing that through, and then all of a sudden we back out? Because it's not approved from the, for the plot, or the sub-plot sizes?
Yeah, I think what you'd be doing is being annexed and then hoping that it gives you?
Yeah, hoping zones, and she doesn't want to go that route.
So you'd be, so you'd rather just cancel it than move forward with the holding zone?
Exactly. Okay. That's, that's the other issue that we're dealing with, with her, and that she doesn't want to move forward that way. So you'll lose that annexation if you want, if you ever had planned on it too, because she just needs to find out what to do, what the Hascal family's going to do with the rest of it, because it is Hascal. Owners on it, you know, she is a Hascal, so. Okay?
Okay, still ready for a motion?
What do you think, Brian?
I usually don't want to make the motion, but I do. It's kind of hard, because I can see where he's coming from. I think she should be, I think she should be able to sell it if she wants to. He says, I know the annexation does take a while, and even six months, that's a pretty fast, fast annexation. Well, you could think a lot longer than that. Does she realize that?
I don't think so, not from what was discussed. I mean, she came in a lot here, and I think we've hit all the marks. I don't think we're behind in getting information to the city when it needed to be there. The annexation process, I think it's about 30 days behind that original thought. And we thought we'd be here, approved 30 days ago, and then we'd be sitting with a plat plan, trying to get through that process. That's why we kind of showed it right now, because we were trying to, what's the council's thoughts on this? Should we back out of it or not?
I, I think we're being very proactive with annexation, so, you know, and it's, it's a growth that we're, that we want, so without, you know, obligating ourselves, which we can't, but we certainly wouldn't be against growth.
I just don't want to put you in the position of we annexes the holding zone, and then something happens down the road, so I'm just trying to figure out how this.
I'd rather not have it.
Right, right, that's what we're, and that'd be going against the recommendation of the Planning Commission, so that's where the challenge is.
The other thing I was telling the county, the City Planning Commission is?
Mayor, we're not getting any of this in the minutes. So if Jeff, if you want it on, if you want it on the minutes, I know.
Yeah, let's, let's get in the minutes.
I just want to make sure it's on the record.
Thanks, thanks, Jill.
Yeah, the other issue I talked with the Planning Commission is, when we go to design houses, when you're 90 to 100 feet, it absolutely makes no difference whatsoever. Because what people do when we're designing and architecting up houses, they'll fit it to that size. You've got to have 200-foot roof frontage if you want to have any kind of space between houses. And so if you're ever going to do a, this as a bigger lot, you've got to have 200 feet. 100 feet's not going to do it, you know, because it's just, people come to us and they say, well, how far, how can I fit this house? They'll put a three-car garage, which all these houses have, because it's a requirement, and that's going to take up 32 to 36 feet just in itself of that building square that we have to fit into. So what we're finding that even in Ashley Ridge, we're squeezing everything in the best we can between those decent lines that we have to do on the 90-foot. And if we had 100, I would just stretch it out to 100, because everyone wants a deeper backyard and all that other stuff. And these, these offer a really nice, deep backyard. It's a, it's extremely nice layout, I think, for what, what we're doing there. They could even put barns back there and other things like that, because they're over 200 feet deep, so it's a pretty good.
So what's the frontage on your other lots that you have?
They're 90, and some are a little smaller, because they've got a radius, but we're finding people like these bigger lots though. But we don't want to get too far out, because building costs are so high. I mean, we're killing ourselves, people can't afford any.
And they're all 30-foot lots?
Uh, no, they're .25.
So these will be bigger lots?
These are all .38, I believe. They're all going up in towards .4.
So if we made, if we put a stipulation in these R19 with at least 90 feet and at least a 30-acre lot, so?
Oh, we meet that with no problem at all. They're all over .35, .38. Most are .4. We're finding a .4 lot sells better than what's here. We did decent amount. But we started in a .5, we have to raise up, because we're going to lose 20% of the, if we go 100-foot roof frontage, we'll lose two, two parcels in there. And there's only 10 that we're actually creating, because we're taking 11 and 12 and swapping them over. Those are part of Ashley Ridge 1. And so if we go down to eight lots, it just takes 20% of the, you know, stuff away from it. It doesn't, it lays out okay, but it's not, it's just not, you're not going to gain what you wanted from it.
So Jill, are we okay to put, if we do a zoning, can we put stipulations in there?
It's an annexation, so yeah, you can, that can be a condition of approval, and then we make sure that the applicant or a future developer met that requirement.
Can I ask one thing?
Yeah.
To Jeff?
Okay.
So, I mean, I've read it all. I'm still trying to understand why they wanted to go to the A5H holding instead of one of the others.
Because they wanted to see the development proposal and see how it met?
Before, okay.
Yeah. Concurrently, to just make sure it met the requirements of the Eastside Comprehensive Plan.
And actually, you told me that, and I just?
No, it's, it's fine. It's a great question. I mean, it's, I don't think the applicant, or the Planning Commission, had any hesitancy of seeing 30-acre and larger lots or residential single-family there. It was, we haven't seen a development proposal, and before we provide that zoning, we want to make sure that it's, it's consistent.
And, but we've got a little bit of a, of an example of the work that this gentleman does, so that, that, we, we were not totally blind.
A little bit of debate going on.
What's that?
I said there's a little bit of debate going on. That's where he'll keep it. But Jill, I'm, I'm just slightly confused. You were saying, well, if they can't continue on through the zoning process, they want to pull it back out. I'm assuming to sell it in the agricultural as a five-and-a-quarter acre, but can't they still build on five-and-a-quarter acres in this zone?
There's already a house on it.
Well, there's already a house there, so that's the one, one-and-done house, that would be the issue. Okay? Thank you, that was a convenient.
I'm going to raise my vote.
Go ahead.
Okay, I propose, and this is a, just a request for the municipal boundary and a couple of parcels, including the proposed condo annexation, located along the Salem Canal Road at approximately 1400 East, with being a R19 with a minimum of 90-foot frontage, with a minimum of 30-acre lots, which means larger than his other project, knowing that he's already done another project close by, and this would be continuation of that, but a big, big, bigger lots. And also, just making sure that we, as the Planning Zoning Commission recommended, making sure that the engineering, water, and sewer holes are taken care of, and with any staff conditions. Does that work?
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Wow, we got two of them. Which one are we going to take?
You can say twice, or I'm going to?
Okay, Brett. Okay, the motion's been made and has been seconded. Roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to number three, request by Scott Julian Nielsen on, for the I overlay to create a future flag lot, 377 South, 400 West, in the R275 zone. Daniel?
That's me.
Yep. Mr. Jensen, that's a private joke.
That's my name for anyone who needs to take notes. All right, so Nielsen Flag Lot. In this case, the application is for the infill overlay zone only, not for the plat work. And the intention there is to ensure the applicant that the overlay is approved before forking out the money to do all the engineering, since this is a small overlay. So the zoning map, this is a residential area, you can see R275. The R275 zone allows for the application of this overlay to establish a flag lot. And you can see right here, this property is immediately south of an overlay we did somewhat recently, last year, at 343 South Erica Estates. And it mirrors essentially Erica Estates in terms of its layout, which makes this one pretty simple. From the street view, you can see the existing lot with, with the home and the width of the lot, you see where that access would go back. And here's a concept of the layout. So again, obviously not engineered, but handwritten. You can see the 30-foot access, like Erica Estates, with the 12-foot side setback, and then the home in the back with stone, brick, elkwood, or like a smart side product. Here's a conceptual drawing of the house. The garage would be on the driveway side, facing the street, however, with the width of the access, the intention of the applicant is to have a front approach area that allows visibility corridor, so you can still see the front door and front windows, so it's not just a garage from the street, so the home's not too isolated. Within the IO overlay, there are several criteria to consider in analyzing whether it's appropriate to apply the overlay for a flag lot. And some of those criteria include whether a through-street or cul-de-sac could exist, whether there could be a more efficient land use pattern, or a better emergency access or connectivity, or the street would be better for infrastructure in harmony with the neighborhood rather than a flag lot. Whether any development alternative exists aside from this flag lot, and the potential for future redevelopment alternatives. And that includes opportunities that are not currently available, but will be as the neighborhood goes through life cycles. In this case, where there's already a flag lot approved to the north, and there's no other access back to that area, staff feels that it is the most efficient use of this land. The applicant did, I, I understand, did approach the sellers and buyers for that property to the north to see if there was any interest in modifying the approved plan with Erica Estates, to see if there's some other redevelopment alternative to explore. They weren't interested in that, and they already have the approved flag lot to the north. So what's done is done there, and staff doesn't really see another alternative that's viable at this time. This went to a public hearing at Planning Commission a few weeks ago, where Planning Commission recommended approval. And this approval is a legislative approval, because it operates like a zone change, so there's broad discretion for the City Council, and staff doesn't see any significant concerns with this proposal. Any questions? And I do know that the applicant is here, if you have questions for the applicant as well.
Does he have to live in the home that's currently there in the front?
No, the home that's currently there in the front isn't disrepair.
Yeah.
But is it the intention of the applicant to live in one of these homes?
Well, are they going to replace the home that's in front?
Uh.
Or currently we have a home?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go, okay. Okay. Yeah, is it? Yeah.
It's pretty much a duplicate of what's already been done to the north, right?
Correct. Yes.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we improve the I1, IO overlay zone for the Scott and Julie Nielsen, future flag lot at 377 South, 400 West, in the R275 zone.
I'll say that.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded. Roll call vote, starting with Councilwoman Hyde.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, you have us. Thank you.
Can I ask Daniel one quick question?
Yes.
We're going to probably see a lot more of these flag lots coming in, because of how pace and the setup, there's lots of land in the middle of the blocks. Is there any way to make this a, some kind of ordinance where staff can, or even just go into planning zoning, they, they can make the decisions instead of having to each one of these come through a whole process to speed it up, make it simpler, put the, on you guys to make good, I mean, no, you make good decisions. decisions. I mean, oh, you make good decisions, doesn't it?
That's right.
It seems like it's, it just seems like it's a lot of work just to do this where we might fail and make it a lot more simple.
Right. So we've tried to go that route somewhat by putting in much more clear criteria as to when it would apply. That way we can weed out ones that we know based on our experience aren't-
Probably wouldn't pass.
But-
So probably, we won't pass it. It wouldn't pass if you were-
Oh, yes.
It's like one guy the other day. Yeah, it wouldn't pass because he didn't have what he needed. And it was a real old subdivision.
Right.
So you intercept those, basically, is what you're saying?
Yeah. We tried to, well, we created, we redesigned the ordinance to intercept those. But in terms of removing it entirely out of city council so that it's an administrative function or a function of the planning commission, we could explore that. Yeah, we'll take that under five minutes.
There you go.
Good. Thanks, Daniel. Mr. Jensen.
I'm guessing most of these usually aren't financially viable to just put one big lot in most of these locations with a nice home on it.
I think that's why we're getting these requests.
That would be my guess, I guess.
Yeah. Sometimes they're as large as an acre.
Love flag lots, but I understand the need for them.
Okay, we'll move on to number four. Daniel's still up. It's request for use of the I O infill overlay zone located at five twenty three south Main Street in the R one nine zone.
And are we okay to announce both of them together? Okay. Yeah, so motion separate, but we have the I O infill overlay, but also the preliminary and final plat approval. So the next two agenda items to get on this one. So this is Beachley Plat A, five twenty three south Main. So here's the area map. It's between Main Street and one hundred east where there's an existing home on the west side, I guess on the east side of Main. And the zone for the area is R one nine, it's a single family residential, nine thousand square foot lots with ninety foot frontage. And the lot is itself undersized. You can maybe see there that if we have sixty-five feet of width, and then a very deep lot, double frontage lot, and currently only house on one of the streets. And so the proposal is to divide the lot approximately in half, give or take, and create a new buildable lot on one hundred east. One anomaly here is there is public utility easement due to power lines that cross this property. You can see that on the plat map, and that's why that's there. So the lots, this is the Main Street side, five twenty three south. That's the larger house on the bottom. And then up above, you can see the one hundred east side where we see the vacant lot. Then the new proposed lot and what was submitted by the applicant and what was in the staff report, as part of the infill overlay, the applicant or the city council can impose additional requirements. And so what was initially proposed, that's on the application and in the staff report, is that the new construction would be limited to brick or stone or stucco exteriors, excluding vinyl or aluminum siding. Also have architectural elements such as dormers, gables, and porches, or at least have those be encouraged. And then a minimum of square footage of a thousand square feet, which is essentially saying no tiny home. It also says that the new home will be set back just to the standard twenty-five feet. Since that time, since Planning Commission, the buyer and builder, is that correct, buyer and builder, has approached the city as well as the Beachleys, the current owner of the property, to request that vinyl and aluminum siding be permitted, and that the side yard setback could be reduced to five feet due to the small lot width. And so you saw the sixty-five foot lots. And to be more consistent with some of the homes in the neighborhood, they wanted to allow the shorter side yard setback. And you can see that with the Beachley's home itself, the existing house on five twenty three south, you have the reduced setbacks.
So we can see exactly which house it is.
Yes. So their house is the south side.
All right.
Yeah. So you can see the shorter setbacks. On the right side, where that van is, there's a carport that goes pretty close to the property line, and a carport that's not new. So with some of the homes in the neighborhood, you just kind of walk through the neighborhood. And I know that both parties here are saying that they want to be able to have a house built that's consistent with that neighborhood and not have standards imposed on them that require them to exceed what's in the neighborhood. And so here's some pictures of the nearby homes on the one hundred east side, which is the side where again the new home will be built. So you can see some siding, a mixture of siding, some stucco. There is at least one brick home. And-
Isn't there a brand, fairly new house right to the south of that?
Yes.
That's not pictured here?
It would be on the-
South.
South. Yeah. I took these really quick on-
Because I think the one just south of that is a big, nice home. And I would think that the standards probably ought to match that home.
Can you pull that up on the map, sign?
Um, I cannot. It's not on the map.
It's stucco, isn't it?
Not the street view.
No, I don't. Is it stucco or sided?
Cardi.
Cardi side, okay.
The Cornwall home.
Yes.
The new Cornwall home. You've got the old one on the corner, and then the one to the south is the new Cornwall.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that was the request of the applicant since Planning Commission, so I'm not entirely sure what to do with that. There was a public hearing at Planning Commission. I don't believe we had many people show up to that Planning Commission that aren't here tonight. I don't remember any neighbors really being at there at the Planning Commission besides the two parties. So yeah, the approvals tonight would be for the preliminary plan and the final plats. And that plan may be amended to show the five foot setbacks if city council is to approve that. And then the infill overlay, that's the reduced width of the new buildable lot from the required, you know, frontage down to the sixty-five. And then the infill overlay would just allow for the same development standards in the R one zone, which would allow for aluminum or vinyl siding as proposed now, as opposed to what was on the application.
Tell me, you know, what's on the application?
What was on the application was this language here, except for the red. So it said excluding vinyl or aluminum. And now they're asking that that be allowed.
I know that we did an exemption to a house on the corner of Third North and Third East tonight. And we did, oh, maybe excluded. So I think it would only be fair that in the same scenario, same kind of an old neighborhood, that we give them that right. If they want to put that on there, they can put it on there.
They're not complex.
It's a-
We didn't allow for aluminum siding.
What?
We didn't allow for aluminum siding.
I don't know that you could violate aluminum siding more, can you?
Yeah, it was in vinyl.
Yeah, it was vinyl. And they, and when they all came down to it, they did it how they wanted to do it. And it looks nice. I don't have any problems with it. So I'm not opposed to redlining excluded from that.
So which of the-
Five foot setbacks, is that fire code or anything like that? Is that still applicable? I don't want to approve something that's, that's really not okay on new standards. Like, I mean, I, would you be willing to go five one side and eight the other? I mean, just because that allows you to get a vehicle behind there is the only reason why I'd ever say that. But so that, I don't know what house you put on there.
It'll have a driveway, so that would allow for somebody to get something wider than five feet of past it.
So just a setback on one side of the lot?
No, both sides.
We're just going to have it mirror the law.
Mirror the neighborhood.
Okay.
Five feet on each side.
All right. So a carport essentially on one side?
Exactly.
So it's a through passage way. So that, I just like to think ahead for some people and like-
Will it be a through passage though?
My concern is the top of the street is not the same as the-
Well, we're just the sellers.
They're not the same layouts. They're not the same neighborhood. That's my concern.
And what is the setback? What is our ordinance on that?
I'm trying to pull up. Why don't I, I thought it allowed for a setback. The standard is eight for the side yard setbacks. And in the I O, it allows for modified setbacks. And should I just pull it up in the code real quick?
We need to make sure that's up.
Yeah. So while you're looking that up, I have a question on your vinyl or aluminum siding. The one we proved that we let do some, at least on the front, it was kind of an accent for the vinyl on that. You aren't planning on doing all vinyl in the front or anything, are you?
It was a double, right?
Yeah, we had other things besides-
Yeah, it had a rock wing.
It had a rock, and it had stucco, and so vinyl was just an accent.
Right.
We don't, we don't have anything specific to build right now. We just don't want to limit anything. We just want to keep it consistent to what's already been put in the neighborhood.
Well, everything, everything in that neighborhood has been there a long time, other than the new house to the side.
Right. Just the styling, I guess.
And I get through the blocks. So we're just, we're neighbors through that big block.
Would you be opposed if we just not all one material on the front of the house kind of deal as an accent? Would that be a deal breaker for you there? That's where our concern comes in. The last one, they came in and said, well, we want to do a rock wings coat and then vinyl the rest of it. And so we just-
And then once again, Mayor, we are not getting any of this on the minutes, so if you come up to the microphone.
Yeah, if you'd like to come up and voice your opinion.
We apologize about that.
Bring on Councilman Christensen.
Jay Beachley, Mayor, Council. Our, our big concern here is just that it would just be putting a stipulation on me, the seller, to sell it to somebody that was going to build it in a certain way, and that that, it would have a more stringent circumstance on them rather than other people in Payson. So in the, in the Payson ordinance, it just says, build it the way other houses are built in the neighborhood.
That's not quite, I don't think that's quite what it says. It's got to be standard.
I'm simplifying it. Yeah. I don't know what it says exactly.
Exactly. But it has to meet certain standards. And some of those homes were built years ago and they didn't have those standards in.
Yeah, the house to the one side was built with T one eleven, which isn't really allowing anymore, which is a wood siding product.
So that's why we're a little bit concerned about what is-
Got it.
Well, the newest house to the south is built to the other side. It's a nice upgrade to the community. And across the street to the east has got a brick.
Well, and with all our other houses, we do, we don't just let them do like one thing. They have to have accents.
Oh, and I get that. And that's, but that's not my concern. You know, I want somebody that is going to build it, that's going to do something nice there. But as far as me trying to build it and get a permit for a building, I'm not going to be doing that.
Well, they'll be able, they're going to be used to some regulations, whether it be here or for other cities.
Right. And they'll have a regulation on that for whoever-
There won't be a supply to them.
Exactly.
All right. So we're just looking to approve the subdivision and make it, and then-
I'm glad that you're building here by night.
Sorry, say that again.
I'm glad that you're building here.
Not keeping it a vacant lot. That's, yeah, that's not so attractive. So, yeah, it'll be nice to get some development there.
We should bring up a conversation about sidewalk to the schools.
Yeah. You know, the, the one hundred and twenty feet of sidewalk would be nice for those kids.
Yes.
For, for just that one little section.
Right. I agree.
And I think it's something that we need to work on as a city to make sure more of that comes in. And we're working that way. It's a slow process. But so are we ready?
Is Daniel there?
Daniel?
Got a question for Daniel.
Yes, you can modify this up at the I O.
So if we approve this with the, and leave vinyl and aluminum in there, they still have to go to get a building permit. So if they came in with something that was a hundred percent vinyl on the front without any accent or anything like, do you have any options at that point or not?
I don't believe there's anything in our ordinance that would restrict that. I can't think of anything.
But I think it's final.
No, I can-
She doesn't want to be on the minutes.
No, I will be on the minutes. So it has to be on the minutes. So if we ever have a question. The applicant's asking for the infill overlay zone to reduce the frontage. And so that is legislative action. The city council has to determine what they want to see in that neighborhood. You know, I think, as you mentioned, the new Cornwall home that was just built is a good example of that, of how it can fit well into the neighborhood. So, you know, I know that the applicant, you know, has, has mentioned, you know, that they want to keep as many options open and available for them or whoever they fell to. And I, I understand that. But we are looking at infill development, and that's where you start to look at the neighborhood. You look to see how it's consistent or how it's going to enhance the neighborhood. That's the responsibility of this body. And so, you know, just to explain, you know, the legislative, but you do have a good example in the neighborhood because there was a home that was built there within the last couple of years. But, you know, but also keeping in mind, you know, the applicant did want to change their proposal to you. That was what was included in your packet.
And I can see, coming from the other perspective, that with a sixty-five foot front, you're going to be narrow. Five foot's only going to allow a fifty-five foot front home, which could still be a good sized home. But on a narrower lot like that, I think your price break is going to be a starter home. It's not going to be a big massive home that would go in there. And so you're trying to keep those options open. And so I think if we can just exclude that and then let the rest of the zoning rules and regulations fall into play, would that work or?
I, there were plenty of options in the original intent, I think. There wasn't one, just one option. You had plenty of options there.
Right. And I just hate to put something in so subjective as make the house look beautiful like the Cornwall's in there, because I don't agree. I don't think it's a nice looking home. It's, it's updated and it looks nicer. But, you know, it's a house on top of a garage, and that's awkward. And I'd hate for something nicer to be put in that is setback maybe, that's a two-story instead of a three-story that is more-
Stuck.
Exactly. That would fit with the neighborhood, would look, in my opinion, would look nicer if it fit more with the neighborhood instead of elevating one single home and then making it look awkward than the others.
But I think you still have plenty of options with the original requirement.
And that's what I would hope, is just extending those options out, making the frontage as best we can. Because I know there's also some really strange wiggle room with where that Cornwall home on the south side ended up being built. Looks like it's ten feet away from the property line. And so there's like a really strange leeway there. And we just want to open that up to the buyers so that they have all the wiggle room that they need so that they can make it through any of the planning to build.
Yeah. I think the major thing here with the building material, I don't think it's going to be where it's situated. But the building material is what we're concerned about.
Got it. Okay.
Then they have to be able to get back there because there are utilities back behind. So they've got to be able to get back there somehow. Because in the middle of the block, there's utilities. I know, but it's, so it's in the middle. Like, here's them on the one side, and they want to go on this side, and the utilities are in the middle of that.
But can they get to the utilities on the other house?
I don't know.
How do they get to the utilities?
I don't think they have access to the utilities as it sits now because it's at the top of the hill.
You have to walk back to get to the utilities. You can't get any vehicles back there at all right now.
You wouldn't be able to get up that hill on that east side anyway.
That's kind of an odd issue to draw something back at the-
Yep. Yeah, you wouldn't be able to get anything next.
Yeah. Okay, I guess we're just left with what materials we'd like to, let, play with him to.
Material screen. Can we look at that again?
Daniel, the material.
As I'm, as I'm looking at where you want to take out the excluding vinyl and aluminum, I wouldn't mind putting that in there. But as, as just part of the frontage and if it's in the back or something like that. But on the front, I don't want to have a hundred percent vinyl or aluminum. So we can put some- So we can put something in there saying it can be partially this or an accent or something like that. But it still gives flexibility, but, but it's not 100% vinyl.
Vinyl, as long as there's some accent. I do think you should add hardy board just as another option that's not in here. And the house next to it's built with hardy board. Whether they use it or not is different because they have several options there, but I think it should be added.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion? Now, we have to do these two separate. Which, which one do we need to do first? Okay, well, just do the overlay zone. Let's get a motion for the overlays.
Okay, so is the overlay of the zones that where we need to make the five-foot setbacks and the building materials?
Building materials is the next one, I think.
Building materials is the next one.
They're on, they're both on the overlay zone.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm making motion that we approve the request for the IO infill overlay zone located at 523 South Main Street in the R-19 zone with a five-foot setback. Side setback on, side setback and modifications of building material to include hardy board and vinyl siding with some sort of architectural design feature, accent.
Okay, so second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Second one, preliminary plan and final plan for the Beachley subdivision. Plaid A, lot, two lots located at 523 South Main Street in the R-19 zone.
This is pretty straightforward right now. Okay, we motion that we approve the preliminary plat, plan and final plat for the Beachley subdivision. Plaid A located at 523 South Main Street in the R-19 zone to the findings. We'll be good.
I'll second that.
What's that? With staff conditions.
With staff conditions, that good? Okay, motion's been made and it's been seconded. Roll call vote, starting with Councilman Holman Hyatt.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Okay, moving on to resolution number six. Resolution, resolution consideration of adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not more than 2,800,000 aggregate principal amount of sewer revenue bonds, series two, 2019, and related matters. Mayor, Council. You missed me, Brian. I'm one of those identical, so I don't need any.
We are, we are asking the council to adopt a resolution, a parameters resolution to bond up to the 2.8 million. That's for the sewer line that's, that needs to be replaced. This parameters resolution will then allow us to go out and, and Brian Baker's ready to put out an RFP for, for those that would like to finance that. We do have a bid, which is less than this amount, but we want to factor in some, you know, some change orders that may happen. So it's, it's pretty straightforward. If the council is comfortable in passing that bond resolution, we'll get busy to try to get this project done.
What was the bid amount?
I think it was around 3.2, wasn't it? Or 2.2.
2.2.
2.2. Somewhere around there.
About what rate or bond are you going for now?
Come on up, Brian.
It's estimated that the city has a larger sewer project down the road that you're aware of. And so the thought would be that we bond for this project now using something shorter term that would then be taken out and rolled into the next financing. So I think that you can borrow over, you know, five to 10 years for below 3%. And so we, we'd look at the right term. And then as the new project came into scope, they'd look at it and say, okay, we'll just add the remaining balance on this project to that. Because if, if you go out and borrow in the market over 20 years and go get a bond rating and do a lot of the things that you'll do on this upcoming larger project, those are, those are expensive things to do for a project of this size. And so we felt that it would make sense to get something that was inexpensive from a cost perspective and also had a sufficiently low rate that it would be economical for the city to make the payments for the next three, four, five years until you were ready to issue a financing for that larger sewer project, in which case you'd just fix it out for the remaining 15 years or whatever the term would, would be left. And that would just go into the, the rate structure that's already been kind of contemplated for that new project.
Okay, any discussion?
To replace the one down by the freeway?
Yeah.
One of the. No, which is temporary. Any discussion? I guess I'm ready for a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing insurance to repair the sewer on, down by the interstate, revenue bonds series in 2019 for aggregate matters, not more than 2,800,000 and related matters.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Ready for a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Christensen.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to E. Work session with Daniel again. Uh-oh. Don't blame him, he's got to pull up here. Probably thought it was going to take a little longer for that.
I have a question about that, Dave. We can keep talking. That new, that bond, will it upsize the sewer ring or is it just putting it back in the way it was?
It's a, is that upgrading the size of the pipe, right? We're upgrading it and we're putting the indoor, what type? It's not concrete anymore.
PVC.
PVC, and so that will, oh, it was concrete. It was concrete.
All right.
It's in need for that. And just, I don't know where the mayor went, but the work session, the, the closed session we had, we don't have to do that. So we're not going to, we're not going to look forward on any closed sessions. List our last item of the work session on the update of the general planners. And Daniel's ready.
Is there an intermission? Yeah. The intermission will be very shortly. We're actually going to start with Sarah. With the general plan, tonight we're going to be looking at prioritization. And with the prioritization, hopefully a discussion on the theories and what we think would be best for the city when we look at responsible growth. So recently Sarah went to a training about responsible growth and the cost of growth. But I think she wanted to say a couple of things first and then I'll give the presentation. Right?
I don't like to talk very much because I always seem to interrupt my work. But yeah, when I went to the UGFOA, they had someone from Fayette, Texas, the city manager and the planner. And they talked about how when you develop, you lose money when you have low density. And we have a big problem because developers come in and they provide this road and we think, oh, great, we've got all this infrastructure now. But now it's ours to maintain, which is very costly. So they presented some information. I came back and shared it with Daniel and said, hey, I found this pretty interesting. You know, we always talk about how we lose money when we have houses. We really don't make money on that. We lose money. Anyway, so I just, it's something that we need to keep on the forefront of our minds when we are approving developments and the type and just make sure that we're physically sustainable.
And never pass up an opportunity to tease someone. I want to point out that Sarah said she doesn't like to talk.
She doesn't like to talk.
Frankly, there.
I think that's what she meant, yeah.
I'm pretty sure she likes to talk.
I think so. Which is good. So just for anybody here in the audience, in the city, we have a general plan, existing general plan. We're, we're going through an update to that general plan. The general plan includes several elements. We've been discussing this for a while, so I won't belabor that. Where we're at right now, we're still looking at November or sometime at the end of this year to have that general plan completed. So this summer, I, I know we have some very busy consultants who are putting together each plan, or each component of the plan.
You sent me that slide right there. It seems kind of weird, but will you send that to me?
Yeah. One of the reasons why a general plan is so important is a town like ours is going to be undergoing a lot of growth in the coming decades. And so managing that growth becomes, well, very important. And quite frankly, it dictates a lot of what our city will look like as a city develops. And so we'll be discussing that. And as I've mentioned before, this is an issue across Utah, I think across the United States, with how to manage it. And a recognition that the tools and the methods of the past might not be the best way forward. The background here represents sprawl and what unmanaged growth often looks like. And the consultants have put together a sprawl model, if you will, and presented that at some of the open houses that many of you have attended and many people in this audience have attended. And we saw from residents that the sprawl model was not the, the model that they wanted to see for our city. And you can see there in yellow, that's the area that would need to be filled up in order to accommodate all of the growth that is projected. I believe that's by 2050, that may be by 2060. But you can see that without stopping the public inertia, taking significant steps to stop the inertia of development, this is the direction that we would head. Does anybody know what this represents? Okay, population density.
Cactus growing in the city.
Cactus growing in the city. It's like a game show or something.
So do we. That's why we're answering this.
It's like there's going to be some X's up here.
It's a graph of some sort.
Yeah, it is a graph of some sort.
Density models of Payson.
It's actually financial. Financial, financial, this is revenue plus minus for a city. The city is Fayette, Louisiana. And the areas of green, does anyone have an idea of what those green areas are?
Because they make money and red costs money.
Green makes money, red loses money. But what do you think is in that green?
Retail. Something financial.
We, we would think retail. We would think maybe big box. What we see.
I guess you're going to say high density.
Is small parcel developments, which tends to be more high density. Fewer parking lots or fewer, you know, land that's just paved over per acre. Some of that's residential, some of that's commercial, some of it's a mix. Not all of it's new. In fact, some of it's very old. And it's an area of town, to go through it, it doesn't look like the moneymaker for the city. The areas that are the highest in red are areas that are lower density. And we'll get to some, some numbers that, that will show this.
When, when you say they're, they're lower in income, are you talking about the tax rate isn't covering the cost? Is that what yours?
Yeah, this is city revenue. This isn't necessarily property values or sales tax.
Property tax.
Yeah, this is property tax.
Covering what the cost of keeping the roads up.
Uh-huh, right.
Yeah.
So we're spending more money than the revenue coming in.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm asking is.
Yes.
Normal civilian residency.
Right, so reading some of the commentary on this study, it says, there are some remarkable things to note right off the top. When we add up the replacement cost of all the city's infrastructure, an expense we would anticipate and cumulatively experiencing roughly once a generation, it came to $32 billion. When we add up the entire tax base of the city, all of the private wealth sustained by the infrastructure, it came up to just $16 billion. See a problem there? To maintain just the roads and drainage systems that have already been built, the family in that median house would need to have their taxes increased by $3,300 per year. That assumes no new roads are built and existing roadways are not widened or substantially improved. That is $3,300 in addition to local taxes just to tread water. That does not include underground utilities, sewer and water, or major facilities such as treatment, treatment plants, water towers and public buildings. Using ratios we've experienced in other communities, it is likely that the total infrastructure revenue gap for a median income home in this city is closer to $8,000 per year. That's one city and one study.
So you're trying to make us feel bad?
I'm telling you, you're all really poor. No, I.
You're not wrong there.
Yeah, this is just to help us.
We don't want to live above yet Louisiana. That's what your town wants.
Well, yeah. And, and I think that the point is that a lot of cities experience similar numbers. And we need to take these things into calculation and as we, we assess growth. So this is the, the city that was brought up at the training that Sarah, or a conference that Sarah attended. This is a town called Fayette, Texas, which is out by Fort Worth and Dallas, that area. In 2015, this is their revenue per area. The red represents a loss of $50,000 per year or more. And the green represents positive cash flow, positive revenue. So you can see what looks like maybe newer homes just by the street layout. They're kind of flat, maybe slight, slight positive, then a lot of it has negative. And we'll get more to how the city's addressing it. So some examples of sprawl. You mentioned before what causes those, those red towers, if you will, that, that negative earnings. Municipal tax yield per acre, this is in Raleigh, North Carolina. Walmart, you think is a cash cow, but Walmart uses a lot of acreage. And so the Walmart in Raleigh, North Carolina generates fewer tax dollars than single founder residential.
What you have to look at though, that is property tax and not sales tax.
Yes, there is sales tax. And I'm assuming this is property tax. I don't know if, Sarah, you recall. Yeah, I, I would assume that, oh yeah, it does say municipal property tax, yeah. Then with property tax, the three and four story residential and office somewhat similar with much higher than a mixed use development, some mixed use developments they have, and I don't know how large those are. Then in Asheville, that'd be what Asheville, North Carolina, you have, you can see land consumed by their Walmart, used by their Walmart, 34 acres compared to one of their downtown buildings, which takes much smaller acreage. And then you see, once you take that property tax per acre, it changes significantly. So it's a different way to look and assess the value that we're getting out of businesses. This isn't meant to be anti-Walmart. It's just meant to impact the, the way that we, we view some of these numbers. So there's a case study done in Afton. That's up in Minnesota, outside of Minneapolis-St. Paul. In, in this study, they looked at a road that needed to be resurfaced, repaired, $354,000. Now, if you took all of the adjacent properties to that road, how many years do you think it would take for the property tax from those properties to pay for that road? Any idea?
Because you don't tell us.
I am.
Never.
So here's the question. If you take all annual property tax, all of it, 79 years. The road itself, spoiler, doesn't last 79 years. So you're perpetually not generating enough to pay for your own road. Another instance is out of Fort Worth, Texas. The reason why I'm using these examples is because they're most readily available, not because they're the most pertinent and I recognize that. In this instance, the, the road had a cost of repair of $36,000 with a life expectancy of five to seven additional years because of this repair. of five to seven additional years because of its repair, and it takes 16.77 years for those properties to repay. So, the point being that, and also along with this low residential, so an automobile-oriented low residential area requires low-density automobile-oriented commercial, because you need the places to park when everyone is driving there. And then with density, as we're hoping to see maybe with our trans-oriented development, the higher-density residential actually requires higher-density commercial, because now people need to be able to walk to the store. Now, with development, this is often referred to as the Ponzi scheme of development, or the Ponzi scheme of sprawl. That's the idea that the city needs new growth to recoup our investment and to give us money. But, as things age, we don't have the resources to maintain everything, and so we need more development, and we use the new development to pay for the maintenance that we ourselves have neglected. And then the city goes bankrupt, there's no additional ability for it to continue to sprawl or to grow. So, that's the affectionate term that is often used for this phenomenon. In Payson, just to give you an idea, some numbers of property tax revenue, 1.2 million, sales tax 3.3, these are approximations, these aren't exact numbers. And then estate road, or I should say, money that comes from estate is B and C fund of $800,000. Now, when we look at some of the costs, it's great when a developer comes and builds a road, we think we've got a free road because the developer built it, but then what about the cost to maintain it? So, we're looking at maybe $7,000, or $7 per square yard to overlay it, or if we're doing, you know, more intensive overlay, thicker overlay, you might be looking at $20 per square yard, and that could increase, and that's just the cost of the overlay itself, not any of the underground utilities. And to give us, and the longer we go neglecting it, those costs skyrocket. And so, when we don't have enough money to do the maintenance that's required, we kick the can down the road, it actually gets cost-bearer and cost-bearer. Oh, I didn't realize this was one of those slides. So, the same goes with a trail. We have a 10- to 15-year life expectancy of a trail, and a $20,000 to $30,000 per mile just of resurfacing it. You can see that it's great when a developer puts a trail in, but we need to make sure we have money to maintain it. So, with Payson projects, you can see some of the recent projects we've had, and Travis can smack me if these numbers are wrong, just not very hard. 930 West for three blocks, 1.2 million, that's not just the overlay, but that sewer water, curb gutter, sidewalk, and the resurfacing. And then, over on 780 West, $800,000, just right there. But that's not entirely new road, that's pretty significant maintenance on that road. But you can see, when you think about our own budget, our own revenue that we have, how costly maintaining things can be. That's not to say we don't want to grow, or we want to give up or something, but it's to say that as we think about priorities, and we think about the strategy, our growth strategy, we need to take the financial considerations into account. So, here you can see some of the nodes that we've been talking about. On the north side, we see where that front-runner station could go with UBU campus. On the east side, we have Holdaway. On the south side, we have, you know, nodes as well with potential, another university with IMTEC, and then another interchange closer to Santaquin. We also have current growth with single-family housing. And as we go further and further out, these require significant investments, capital improvement projects, they require large-scale system improvements that we need to put a significant amount of money into. Well, what happens if it doesn't pan out as we planned? The more spread out we are, the greater chance we have to fall. And that's where, as planners, we're saying we need to prioritize and look at a responsible growth pattern, because there is the potential that while we put something on a plan, it won't pan out in the timeframe we expect, or in the way that we expect, and then we still have bonded or put money forward toward a project, and now our own residents are on the hook to pay it, because we don't have the impact fees that we were expecting. And we see this happen, we saw it happen a lot with the last recession, but with that cycle of development, there's always that risk. So, to go back to our case study, so in 2015, this is Fayette, Texas, and what they did is they took an area in the middle of town and did a large-scale redevelopment infill project. Looks like this, mixed-use residential, office, retail, restaurant, so similar to some of the nodes that we're talking about. So, I think we're looking in the right direction. And their consultants put together a 2050 projected revenue based off of their nodal development right here in the middle of town, and you can see that what was once a red area now shows as even, what would that be, about 30 years out? They'd have substantial revenue growth with that dark green area in the area that is more dense. So, with all of that said, we need to look at Payson. Now, I don't say all this to suggest that the financial consideration should be the top consideration or the only consideration, there's a quality of life and a preference and all that. But as we go through the general plan, we wanted to make sure that the financial component is something that we have fully vetted and explored. So, with Payson, how do we want to see this go forward? As you can see, do we want to be more with the lower density, where we would see more of the red, if you will? And as we look at kind of that heat map, do we want to go more lower density with the new growth, or higher density? And you can see here, with the lower density, we have fewer units per area. Also, the infrastructure to accommodate the same number of residents needs to go over more miles. With higher density, you have more units per area, and because you have the same amount of people in a smaller area, you have less infrastructure. And so, it's not just a matter of, there are now more people there, there's actually less infrastructure on top of more people able to pay for that less infrastructure. So, back to Payson, and our population. In the, what's the word, in the open houses we had, these, well, we looked at the growth scenarios, and it's the scenarios two and three, which were ones that weren't quite, everything is infill, and they weren't sprawl, but they were looking at nodal developments, containing the development as much as possible while still allowing some single-family detached and whatnot. It was kind of a balanced approach to growth. And if you recall, we had the reasons why people supported that, they liked walkability, they liked that it kept farmland open, they liked, you know, that it didn't use so much land, they liked that growth was centered around UBU and transit and near Walmart and those kind of things, and that, you know, maintained the rural character. And so, with that, staff and the consultants have taken that data and put together a prioritization plan, where we've looked at how to contain the growth going forward, so we're not over-invested, if you will, so we're not involved in growing too many different places at the same time. And this is the plan, a very working document, I should stress, that we are pitching, I don't know if that's the right word, Jill, but throwing out the fore discussion. And so, you can see here that areas that are labeled as ones, this is the right side, hang out on, so we'll camp out here, areas labeled as one are areas where we are currently developing, all the way up to six, which are areas we see as furthest out. So, by way of example, like six, the interchange closer to Santaquin, that node, if we had a developer say, we see a future node around this intersection, we'd say, "Great, so do we, but it's 20 years out, let's plan and make it." But areas where there's a one, you can see, that's our most immediate growth, in the business park, south side of town, villages of Arrowhead, where we're currently receiving building permits, on the east as well, where we just approved the Holdaway annexation, and we're seeing some growth out there. And two areas that we can see immediately growing, or in immediate coming years, working all its way up to a six. So, capping out here, I guess this is where we wanted some feedback from our city council, and discussed this to make sure that our consultant team is taking this data and going in the right direction, and that staff's going in the right direction with them. So, comments? That's my presentation.
I think it's pretty alarming that the model, although we don't want to be inundated with cement boundaries, you know, just cement from one point to the other, words I just came from in San Francisco, but we do need a hybrid, we do need a hybrid of density that will support the development of the infrastructure.
So, you touched on this a little bit, but my question is, how does this quality of life interchange with cost? Like, are there any studies that show, well, crime, just happiness, things like that? Because the worry that I have a little bit is that you get all these high rises, where families or kids are going to run, I don't know.
So, once you have green space...
And, yeah, it's a good question. I think it, there's a, some people will say this is good, but population declines are hard for economies to absorb, and I don't think that this lends itself to population sustainability, as far as family size goes.
Which model doesn't lend itself to sustainability?
Well, not this model. Well, okay, so I like the hybrid. Let me just back up and I say this, I might ask them kind of like, general, how this all fits together, but if you end up with like lots of high-density housing, nodes, things like that, like they cost the cities less, but what is the cost on quality of life? You know, is there, I mean, some people have lived there all their life, there's not a cost, people live in New York and they love New York, so they'll probably say there's no cost of life, you know, no quality of life issue, but for Payson, and for a community that likes families, what is the trade-off with quality of life?
There are so many studies on that, going so many different directions, so...
It's not an easy answer.
Right, you have studies that would suggest that bikeable communities would increase happiness because people are more fit, you know, they're able to bike, and walkable communities would do the same kind of thing. You would also have studies that show that kids do need a place to run around, and they do need open space, that's why you don't see many kids in Manhattan, you know?
That's what I'm concerned, though, like Japan's got a negative population growth, Europe's got a negative population growth, and the United States for the first time in 35 years...
Negative population. Yeah, negative, negative population growth.
And I know that's true, and we're an economy in the nation, because we don't have that negative population growth. We have larger families, but if you're putting everybody in an apartment complex, we're not going to have four to six kids, which is what you need for that population to convey. The community adds to the little space.
That's why I say a hybrid of, you know, not total innovation with, you know, very dense population, but a hybrid, I love that. I'll make sure.
It's a slippery slope, you stay right where you need to be, but I think we're kind of there with that, looking at those higher-density, 55-plus apartments all around the east side of town, we've got some townhomes, some good starters going on, it's good to see the middle of the road, larger homes going in again, too. I think we've kind of swung away from that, and we've got to bring it back in a little bit. I personally think that we're trying to balance it really well, whether or not we're...
Well, this discussion is important.
Yeah, to keep us grounded.
Because I think there's a lot of questions to be asked in the process.
So, with that, and just to be clear, there are areas on this map that would accommodate executive housing, so that's larger homes on larger lots that are still stuck, well, I don't know about starter necessarily, but...
The executives can't limit, I mean, they can't limit executive housing.
Right, and we don't want all executive housing, we want some...
You need that, right.
Exactly.
No, I understand.
And there's still some single-family detached homes on lots of various sizes, there's townhomes, and then smaller apartments, and then higher density. And so, we don't want a situation where the only thing we build is high-density, because there's no place for families to live as they grow. But, the flip side of that is when we do all single-family detached, like we have for so many years, young couples, empty nesters, couples that don't want to have a lot of kids, or, you know, whatever it is, singles, they're forced to live in single-family detached homes with our lots.
Right.
So, a mix of housing.
Well, there's certainly a mix for that.
Right.
And I think this map shows that, I think it makes it up, not perfect, but nothing's perfect. So, Daniel, I have a couple of things for you on the map. One is, I think, I think it's probably down by IMTEC, and even though it's the same, you hear one, two, doesn't make that, I think that's going to develop a lot faster than the Holdaway property, because you've got one corridor, the Holdaway property, you don't have the main road going in yet. But I do like the hubs, where you can really do a walkable community, I like having at least like four within our communities. I think that you're going to have, and where Teresa lives, you've got a five there, 10 to 20 years, you're going to have a lot more pressure very quickly to get that, because of the people who want to do it and demand the location, I think that's going to come online. We need to plan for it more quickly.
Yeah.
The one thing that I never see on any of these maps that has me concerned is we kind of keep everything to the east side, and I really think that we need some west-side corridor, like, not necessarily like a belt route, but something, something to try to, if you're getting off the freeway and need to really kind of get up into town in a different way, there's never, there's no roads up that side that are through and connectors, and I think we need to kind of keep that in mind personally. And I know it'll facilitate, yeah, this road will get bigger, but some of those roads don't go through enough that they really do facilitate that, hey, this is going to grow, but I...
But you have the potential for that to take hundreds up, on my street options, take 600 west.
Right, but now, how do you get from 5600 west back to UBU? That's the one that I am, that's where I keep drawing these worries.
You probably 56, they're down, and then another one will come back up that way.
Yeah, so, just kind of food for thought, as we're looking at this and saying, hey, where this could we maybe put in the master plan, this road one day will have a larger setback, and plan accordingly, so that we're not looking at 20 years down the road going, ah, yeah, we can't get 150,000 cars a day down 198.
I think that's just looking at that.
Yeah, and I mean, we're just discussing, it's...
No, but it's a good discussion.
We're talking about identifying those things at 10,000 feet. Right, and I know we've got like American Way that's kind of over there, would pick up a little bit of that traffic, because that railroad track is a big obstacle. It's going to be very expensive to get out and around, because it goes down our crossings.
How we do this?
I have a question about developing growth, and I can't remember if it was you and I, I think it was you and I that talked about it. So, we talked about preserving like farmland and things like that for people who like are done farming, want it being done, right? But also trying to maintain agriculture, and we talked a little bit about property can sell their development rights and apply it somewhere else.
Oh, a transfer development right program?
Right.
That's something we'll need to explore.
Because I'd be interested in that for maintaining some agricultural land, meaning so it's viable, so somebody can come in and, I mean, if we're going to go with these nodes and higher density, let's sell that development rights and preserve it somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah. We've started exploring that, to implement a program would take a little bit, be rather comprehensive in its approach, because in order to be viable, you can't have too much already developable land, because why would you pay to effectively upzone your property when you can just go buy a different parcel? So, areas would need to be downzoned to incentivize people to pay to upzone it, if you will. It's not really upzone, but to get those transfer development rights. So, that would be a challenge, as well as just the amount of developable lands we have on the north, south, east, and rest of town, as well as land in Santaquin and Spanish Fork. So, if we were to put things that make it more challenging for individuals to build here, there's so much land in the area that that's what we could see. But we'd like to explore a TDR program, but that's one of the hurdles I can see right off the bat.
So, I can see that, but I think if we, one of the things I could, you know, because they always come and they want more higher-density...
explore a TDR program, but that's one of the hurdles I can see right off the bat.
So I can see that, but I think if we, one of the things I could, you know, because they always come and they want more higher-density, they're in a lower-density, and we always give it to them.
Right, so that's where TDR could work, potentially, for these nodes.
But I think we have to identify those, not just, oh, sure.
Sure, let it rip, fifty acres, however much.
But I, I, I would be interested in, I don't know what the rest of the council feels like, I, I would be interested in developing those as a way to, to get both and preserve agriculture and get some of these densities and these-
That's the way it needs to be, yeah.
The way it needs to be. And I, and I don't know how complex it is, and time-consuming or money, maybe not worth it, but I'd be interested in working on that.
Well, like Brian said, at where I'm at, there's a lot of people that want us, there's a lot, so I really think that we need to be looking at that node and see what it is we want out there. I mean, whether they bring the commercial, whatever it is, out there right away, people are gonna know where it's going to be. And that's why I keep saying, I'm worried that as soon as somebody punches underneath the railroad, we've lost any kind of control that-
Right.
-we want to have.
Right.
And I know we've had many, many talks about that.
Yes.
And-
Yes.
Because I don't want it to just, I don't want a developer to come and say, oh, I'm gonna do this, and, oh, that looks really good, but it's just like you said, you know, ten years from now, they're long gone. The city has to drive clear out there and take care of that, and it's just, you know, three or four hundred acres. I don't know. And then there's a whole bunch on the other side, so.
And that's the understanding that the city has as well, I was gonna say concern, but that's not quite the right word, it's the understanding. But with that understanding, um, comes the realization that we can only grow in so many directions at the same time, so that's where prioritization comes into play. This doesn't have to be the prioritization plan itself that's proposed, but with the general plan, we are going to have a prioritization plan, um, to point that growth in the right direction, because we recognize that right now there's the potential to grow in all four cardinal directions. Um, and that, that would be very expensive for us, and open us up to a lot of potential for a crash, um, because we'd be so leveraged on every side. Um, so, really, in any direction we go, I think we can say pretty much any direction we go, we'd have to have significant investments, and so if we do all of those, if, if we go to invest on each end, you know, on each side of town, we're not going to have the kind of growth to recoup, um, the investment as quick as we want, because now we've spread, so then that makes sense. Where if we point developers in the same directions, we can fill up that area, recoup our investment before moving on, uh, to the next project area, you know, the next area, next side of town. Travis, that's about, so it's similar to what you were, you were saying, um, I don't know if you want to hear some numbers from Travis, I don't know how many numbers you have, um, but I know it's in the millions of dollars, just-
We've discussed it briefly, and I realize that it still comes down to the price of ground, where the developer's gonna go, that's, that's all there is to it, where he gets the, the ground cheapest.
Yeah, I guess that the real challenge is going to be, how much do you want to raise your utility rates to do this? Because developers will not pay for all this. So like, we need another tank on the east side, even to support the growth that we're getting now, to go west, we have to put a well, which is a million dollars, and a tank roughly right now is about a dollar a gallon, so if we have to put a four-million-gallon tank in, there's four million plus the piping to do it. So just in the water department alone, we could be, to put two tanks in and another well, we could easily be ten million or more, because of all the piping that you've got to get. Then you throw in sewer and lift stations and trunk lines, I mean, that's what you guys have got to look at, too, is if we go in every direction at one time, we have to pay for all this, because development is not gonna go pay eleven million dollars for two hundred acres.
Sure, uh, impact fees, have, or is that stuff incorporated with impact fees?
Well, to, to, that's the other problem, if you want impact fees to pay for this, they've got to probably triple or quadruple. And that's, then you're gonna have a fight with the Home Builders Association and all the developers, because now our, our impact fees are gonna be a lot higher than any of the surrounding communities. So those are the challenges that, on, on our end that we're facing, if we just say we're gonna let growth go anywhere. So that's why we've kind of, that was kind of the main point of this whole presentation, was we are getting pressure everywhere, but we don't have the infrastructure just to grow that way, and if we do it, we, they're gonna say it's a system improvement, which we've already dealt with Mark before on other projects, and the city has to front that bill. So I guess that's all we're trying to say, is we're not opposed to growth, that's not what staff's trying to do, but you've got to be prepared that you're gonna have to pay for it, all of us that live here, that we're gonna have to pay for this growth, because impact fees can't handle it all on its own, development sure isn't gonna pay for it like they used to, you know, twenty years ago, we could've said, if you want to develop, you go build the water tank, and they would've had to do it, but the laws don't allow that anymore. So that's, that's all we're kind of trying to say, is, you know, we've got to be smart on growth, because we can't, we really, as a city, can't afford it. I mean, we've already got three bonds in the water department right now, we've got a couple in the sewer, you know, we're gonna have to upgrade the sewer plant here in about three years, so how do we bond for another twenty, thirty million dollars in improvements possible? So, I, I don't want to be deady downer, but that's kind of where we are.
Okay, Travis, you're a deady downer.
But, you know, I don't, I don't want to pay for it either, I live here just like you guys do, and I don't want my rates to be three times what they are right now, just so we can afford it. So, that's where they, where we're gonna get the heat.
So, low-hanging fruit and strategic, which, which area is the most strategically advantageous? Or which one is the most costly if we don't do it and they go somewhere else?
Well, I think-
Like Santaquin coming and taking out.
Santaquin's got the same problems, they're growing in every direction, too, though.
They are.
They barely get a grocery store.
Yeah. The areas that make the most sense are the areas we've already invested in, and not move past those areas until those areas have developed and we've received, we've recouped, you know, what we put into it. Like Travis was saying, we're not gonna get enough money just off the impact fees, and so only partially filling up a place before we go and bond for another area doesn't make a lot of sense, and so, to the planning side, I don't know.
At the same time, how do we force somebody, yeah, oh, hey, everybody's built around you, you have to build now, I mean, we can't force them to sell their property.
Correct.
And that's the problem we're running into, is you're getting pockets here and there, and how do we alleviate that? Can we put, hey, yeah, to build over there by number five, your building, your impact fees are four times what they are to build over by number one, because that's not where we want you to grow at. So that's not fair at the same time, but, I mean, we don't want to become that city that says, hey, they won't let me build because I'm too far away from the sewer plant.
It's that we wouldn't do improvement projects to facilitate development in an area until that ready, that area's ready for growth-
Right.
-based on the plan. Doesn't mean we tell somebody that they can't build if they're in the right zone for it, it just means we're not gonna pay to build a road or to do a, a water, you know, whatever it's gonna be, your sewer, whatever it's gonna be.
And responsible growth says that you do say no sometimes.
Right, right.
Like, like, we're gonna say no to some people.
Yes.
And they'll probably yell and scream that we're hard to work with, but, I mean, it's just time and place that we've got to prioritize. This is a bad example, I can't think of a better term, but chess, so checkmate, uh, to a certain extent, because we're not trying to checkmate our neighbor cities, but I think Salem getting that Rivera Center was really big for them, really detrimental to us.
It was.
So, when I, well, potentially, like, I don't know what the costs are, like, when Travis is saying all these costs, maybe-
It was over three blocks.
You know, we never would've been able to do it possibly, but, when I say being strategic, like, there are places right there where we can say, hey, Santaquin, you're done, or, or Spanish Fork, or, you know, we're not trying to, I mean, we want to work well with it, but we want to be strategic and make sure that we have key economic corridors that we lost on that exit right there.
The other option is those SAAs, the special assessment areas, but then you have to have a big enough area that's willing to pay for those improvements, that then they will get reimbursed if other people tie on.
Yeah.
And those, those lately have not been successful for us to get through.
Isn't that what you would consider the Arrowhead development, isn't that what they did there?
No, they had to run a mile of water line, and they're gonna have to run a mile of PI line, and they had to run a mile of sewer and a force main to be able to develop out there.
But they can get reimbursed.
But they can get reimbursed if other people tie on to it.
But there is also something new in the legislature this year, is the public improvement district, which is, you can gerrymander and do whatever you want, so if you get some property owners that want to do something together, it goes through the city, but the city's not obligated, they just get the bonding from, from the rate from the city, it's higher than the general rate, but there is another avenue out there now, that, so, big areas that want to do something, there's three hundred acres, and instead of waiting for us, they might be able to do something on their own.
But yeah, if it's an area that's number five, that's kind of their option, because we're really not ready for it, but if they're willing to do that, like a special assessment and do that, then they could develop faster than what we had planned.
Well, I, I've said this before, if we don't work with them, they're gonna do stuff, they're gonna do the five hundred quarters, and, and, I mean, I guess if you guys are okay with that, that's what's gonna happen. Because, like I said, there's some older people out there, they gotta do something with their ground, and that's being talked about, so, I'm just, I've, I've told all planning, I've told Travis, you know, it, it is there, that's, that's an option they have, so.
Who wants to buy the land for? I mean, I know there's not many people waiting to farm it.
You, you can't buy farmland, if you have to pay more than five thousand an acre, you can't afford the farmland.
So, and I'm the same, no, but she said, there you go, those five hundred quarters, then we're back, I mean, infill and overlay and gotta do this, and we're doing flaglots because we've got houses in the middle of developments that are in funny spots, and, and so I, it, I don't know, it's a double-edged sword, I don't know which way you look at it, so. But anyway, this is good information, it keeps us enlightened, and we appreciate it when you keep us in, in line, saying, yeah, well, maybe we could afford this or that, or, or things, you know, when you're looking at the whole picture and when you're seeing tippings over here and there, so.
Okay, uh, I think we, we, but there is not a need for a closed session, so I will hand down a motion for adjournment.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.